... meet in the city of Winter Park. If you all would remember to sound your cell phone, turn off the vibration mode too. That would be great. Also, if we're going to have an invitation from Soraya Galini from Leaders Preparatory School. And after, if you don't make stand in the class, please, we appreciate that. Welcome. Please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Soraya Galini again, the mother of three men and a teacher at Leaders Preparatory School. And I am humbled and honored to be invited here today. Just wanted to say a little words about Winter Park. Winter Park is a beautiful city that I got introduced to when I moved to Orlando. It is a point where beauty, history, and dreams meet. The city of Winter Park is an example of how a bud blooms into a beautiful flower full of intricate details, depth, and richness. Like its flower, it needs nourishment and care, making the right decisions for a precious entity, and having a democracy that encourages different ideas and proposals to keep the city of Winter Park a unique work of art. Education is not only a component of this great city, but is intertwined in everything that is done. Listening, education, knowledge, and empathy are at the forefront of our lives. Listening to people's needs and addressing different issues will lead the city into greater things. The city of Winter Park not only stands for beauty, but the beauty in differences. Our differences, like a classroom, bring out the doctors, the artists, mechanics, mathematicians, performers, and engineers. May God bless the city. Give its leaders and residents the wisdom, patience, and faith to always pursue the best for all. Amen.
... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for those words. It was beautiful. Thank you. Okay, Randy, do we have any changes to the agenda as to the first question, sir?
No, sir.
Would that be the foremost approved?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor's report. I have the pros calling Jeff Branch.
Good afternoon, Jeff Branch of the Florida League of Cities. Good to see you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before I get started, just wanted to say thank you to the city of Winter Park. My colleague Tara and I have been here all day long, shadowing your great city. We got a great tour of your city. We ate at 3:10 and we had some coffee and croissants. So I wanted to thank Bronz, Allison, Kim, George, Kyle, Vanessa, Chris, and Clarissa for showing us and rolling out the red carpet. I may be moving down here. It was so good. It was so, so great. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Each, each year at the end of, at the end of legislative session, we like to recognize local elected officials and city staffers for their hard work, advocacy on behalf of Florida League of Cities. And so we hand out Home Rule Hero awards. And two, two of the Winter Park officials have already gotten theirs, Commissioner Carolyn Cooper and your Building Department Manager, George Wiggins. And so we're here to present your great mayor with his award. And it just briefly reads, "For being a champion of defense and protection of municipal home rule, the Florida League of Cities likes to recognize Mayor Steve Leary, 2019 Home Rule Hero." If you can come join me, we'll get a quick picture to tweet it out and tag you.
Why don't you get in? Where do you want us, Teresa?
One, two, three. Yes, one, two, three.
Thank you all.
Come back anytime, guys.
Can I mention something?
Sure, please do.
I went to one of the League of Cities meetings for this upcoming year, and they actually put our mayor's letter in our packet so we would have an example or a good sample of what we can do. So it was very exciting for me to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody. Commissioner Cooper, you were recognized earlier. Thank you. Everybody on this dais does good work in advocating for the city and everybody at the city from staff as well. So I know George is recognized, but there's many others that work on behalf of the city and the residents to advocate for all of us, as well as our friends from the League of Cities. Thank you all for what you do for us up there, fighting for home rules. So we really appreciate everything you do for, on behalf of the entire community here in Winter Park. And thank you for making it down today. Okay, folks, we have the appointment of the voting delegate for Florida League of Cities. I will take a motion.
Move Steve Leary.
Move Mayor Leary.
I'll second it.
Am I plan, am I going to that? I think I'm scheduled to be.
Now, now you've got to go to the luncheon, too.
Okay. I was not expecting that. I was going to nominate Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you very much. You have to be fast.
Okay. I'm happy to accept that. So all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Rand, Andy, Randy, City, City Manager's report.
Yes, I'm going to ask Clarissa Howard to come forward, and she's going to be doing the presentation on the Arts and Culture Alliance.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to ask forward Betsy Gwynne, the Executive Director at the Bach Festival Society of Winter Park, and also Anna Heller, our Bruce Abiel Director at Cornell Fine Arts Museum. It has truly been an honor to work with not only these ladies, but the 18 organizations that our Arts and Culture Alliance represents, and they have a presentation on behalf of the alliance for you.
Oh, we have a cheat sheet. This is great. Welcome. It's an honor to be here on behalf of the Arts and Cultural Alliance. We are here to celebrate the arts today. So Clarissa introduced me, Betsy Gwynne, with the Bach Festival Society, and Dr. Anna Heller with the Cornell Fine Arts Museum. And we're going to begin today with a brief video on our alliance partners. So that was a very brief video that we prepared as part of our work with the alliance. As you know, the arts are in the DNA here in Winter Park. Since the very beginning, the arts have been an important part of the fabric of Winter Park. And when the city began its visioning process to create its new strategic plan, the arts and culture community was part of it. We, I'm going to jump ahead, but the visioning process engaged thousands of people, got their feedback on what made Winter Park so special. And the arts and culture community was one of the priorities that people shared, what makes Winter Park so special. So when the city completed its vision process, it adopted the vision statement, "Winter Park is the city of arts and culture, cherishing its traditional scale and charm while building a healthy and sustainable future for all generations."
So in the summer of 2016, we stopped, well, the city commission requested the formation of an Arts and Culture Subcommittee, which we later retitled the Arts and Culture Alliance. And that was officially formed in September 2016. It operates under the Public Arts Board and is convened by the Communications Department of the city of Winter Park. So I do want to say thank you, Clarissa and Craig, for keeping us on track all this time. We are now 18 organizations based in Winter Park that are members of this alliance. All of us together work to fulfill the mission. And the mission of the alliance is really to establish Winter Park as a destination to have its role and impact in the arts, recognized not only by our community, but also from communities from near and far. And I'm going to ask those members of the commission, of the alliance, rather, who are present today to please stand, as well as members of the Public Art Board. We have been meeting monthly since We have been meeting monthly since September of 2016, and what's happened in the process is that whereas before we were all working individually, and as successful as some of us, all of us are really, and have been, it was a fragmented effort. What happened in the three years since with the establishment of the alliance, we have started working together. And I can tell you, as a relative newcomer to Winter Park, I've been here almost seven years now, and I have seen with my organization, the Cornell Fine Arts Museum, but also in general for Winter Park, a very significant difference in the last three years since we've started working together, putting our resources and our ideas and sharing them and, and trying to create and discover synergies, which when we were working in a fragmented way, were being lost.
There's such rich depth in arts programming here in Winter Park. We, we took it upon ourselves first, one of our, our main charges was sharing information with the local community. This is a focused effort to get residents of Winter Park aware of and participate in the many opportunities that are right here at their front door. So marketing was the first, and as Anna reflected, we, we really wanted to be seen as a collective community. So we identified a logo that the city designed, something that we could share individually on our websites, on our email blasts, things that we send to our patrons and members that identify us as being members of the Arts and Culture Alliance of Winter Park. We created a brochure that's evergreen that lists the organizations that you saw previously listed on that slide, along with a map that shows where they're located. It's a very dense map, something this city should be very proud of, to have so many rich organizations in this really small footprint. And then we created press releases announcing it. All of the organizations have and distribute these brochures, the light pole banners, everything to identify us as a community. What we did, too, was to create a hashtag, because everything is digital today. We wanted to be sure that the arts and culture community had a robust presence on the city's website. The city of arts and culture, now, we have the logo front and center. Guests can go and check a really attractive calendar to see what's happening at any time they have guests in town, they want to spend the weekend doing something cultural. It's all right there at their fingertips. We also wanted to let the business community and those that may not be as familiar with the arts and culture in Winter Park, share with them this really rich history and activity that goes on every year. So we gathered, we sent out invitations, and in 2018, we hosted a gathering at the Cornell Fine Arts Museum. And then last year, we had a wonderful, last year, this, this year, just in March, we hosted a gathering at the Casa Feliz. So not only were we able to invite people to talk to them about the arts, but we hosted it at a beautiful venue. We also looked at how we could really celebrate arts and culture in a narrow time period. And we looked at what we were doing, and February is a very dense time for programming. And we looked at the calendar, the shared calendar, and we said, "Let's celebrate a Weekend for the Arts." What I think is remarkable is 99% of the programming that we celebrated and, and publicized for this Weekend for the Arts was already happening. We just didn't have the, the muscle or the, the support of the city staff to be able to share it as one. And I think that's a tremendous statement to the effort of this group. So it was a tremendous, we've done it two years in a row, and it's been a tremendous way for us to get this story of Winter Park Arts and Culture out to our community and beyond.
So what our society as a whole tends to forget all too easily is that the arts are not only a vital element of a good life, but they're also an economic engine. And we are benefiting from studies that are done at the national level from the, by the organization, American for the Arts. And the numbers are really incredible for our area, for Winter Park. The 2015 study, which is the most recent study that was published, the arts and culture have generated almost $46 million, 45,982, to be exact. And a million people attended events in the arts and cultures, in, culture in our community. And, and as if these numbers, if these numbers weren't big enough, I also want to put it in perspective, and obviously you all know how small our community is. Winter Park has 2% of the population of Orange County, and yet our arts and culture represents 27% of the county's offerings and the participation. So that is something that we are all very proud of, you should all be very proud of, and, and it really reinforces the, how important our coming together due to your decisions, our coming together is to be able to highlight in a much more ample way what we do in our own organizations. And the, the impact is already seen. As we said, we've been operating for three years, and we've had many publications, press outlets paying attention to what we do, paying attention to what we represent, and, and that is part of the impact that this group has had, where we all joined together and, and shared our resources. So we want to thank you for that, and also for the marketing dollars that the city has generously given us, so we can reach these press outlets. And of course, the other thing is, what are we doing from now on? And, and since we feel that the efforts in the first two years have gone really well, but we are now at a point of where we can change our course, because we've operating well for two years, we need a strategy. So we are now embarking on a strategic planning session that will make us pause, reflect on what's worked well, and, and decide what the next steps ought to be that could create the biggest impact and that would give the, the biggest return on all our missions and on the city's mission as a city of arts and culture.
I sometimes think that we, we, we have the, the benefit of living in this great city, and we're surrounded by this art and these opportunities all the time, that we forget what it's like for someone coming to Winter Park and experiencing it. I wanted to share this testimonial that a Bach Festival patron shared with us through our, we do research after all of our annual Bach Festivals, because we want to hear from patrons and, and guests. And this patron says, "I loved each performance. Such an honor to have an outstanding, to have outstanding artists share their talents with us here at Rollins and Winter Park. We moved here because of the arts and culture. Thank you for bringing this opportunity to us."
And, and I'll second that. The best reward for all of us is what we hear from our constituents, and this is a personal favorite, no offense, theme parks. But this particular visitor said, "I'm on a holiday from England, and this serene and beautiful museum makes a glorious change from the theme parks." So yes, we're about much more than the theme parks, and I think the arts is, are the single most important element of that second half of the, of the circle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a reminder, sorry, I'm going on vacation, I forget to push the button. Just a reminder that you have a work session, CRA work session before the next city commission meeting at, at 2:30 on July 8th. And staff is working hard to finalize the budget, so July 8th will also be the budget presentation during the regular meeting. So that concludes my report.
Great. Questions for the city manager? Mr. Smith? Ms. Cooper?
Randy, about a month ago. About a month ago, I think we had discussed the question of, we were taking over a lot of the functions of the library, and it included maintenance and scheduling and adding a new employee. And I had asked them about the financial cost of that, and you were going to get back to us. Is that maybe this week?
Yes, we'll get that to you as well. You asked for the tree information to come back, and that's going to be probably the second meeting in July.
I know, I know you were gone a little bit, and somehow it's hard to remember that ongoing to-do list. But the other thing is, I know for our library reuse, if you have not been to those task force meetings, they're pretty incredible. We've got a good group there working, and they need to hear from you. We heard from, they heard from Rollins, and they also heard from, I think they're going to hear from the History Museum and the Parks Board. But what I was going to ask is, what I would love to see is us bring in some of the real creative minds, like John Rife of East End Market, or John Rivers, or if we could bring in those sort of people that have an idea of how to make it sustainable, you know, then we go beyond dreaming to actually sustaining. I would love to see them invited, if that's possible. And our arts community, I, I didn't, we haven't actually heard from anyone from the arts community yet, and I would love to look at that potential reuse from, from those, from that view and from those classes. Anyway, it's exciting. If you haven't been, please come. This board is doing a really good job of exploring alternatives. And that was my question, Randy, if we can do that, if we can bring those folks in. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
My only question about that is, that board has full ability to bring anybody they want to. They're not reporting back to us, and we're not reporting to anybody about that. That's their responsibility, as I understand it. So hopefully, they'll look for other people, but I didn't think we were, that was our job right now. It's going to come to us eventually, and hopefully, they'll get all of that in their meeting to do that, but I wouldn't think that we would be bringing that to them.
So I, I don't think it's a, I, I understand what Commissioner Cooper's asking, and I think that there's, we could probably bring in any number of different groups to present to them, but I, also, there's probably some time limitations that they have. And yeah, they're operating independently of us. They will report their findings back to us. We can certainly, if certain things have not been investigated, send them back to investigate. But I'm happy to just stay, again, hands off and let them do what they've got to do. They've got staff directing them, and I think they're all pretty capable folks, so I'll be interested in seeing their, their report. Commissioner Cooper?
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're looking at sustainability of those options. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney, Mr. Artiman?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners. Just a kind of an update. I had an inquiry or some inquiries about some lawsuit that the League of Cities has filed, along with Fort Walton Beach, Port Orange, and Naples against the law that was passed in 2017, the small cell providers. And as you may recall, we adopted a very strict ordinance a year or so ago with respect to that, and we, we, to maximize the city's control in city rights of way with respect to these items. The three cities in the League of Cities that have filed this lawsuit just recently against the 2017 law is pending, I talked to the General Counsel at the League of Cities because they had called early, before they had actually filed the suit, and asked about whether Winter Park would be interested in participating. They were evaluating whether it made sense in which cities to bring in. The great bulk of that, funding for that lawsuit is being shouldered by the League of Cities. So I have a call, another call into the General Counsel who was out last week. I wanted to give you an update about that. We are not, we, the city of Winter Park are not a party to that lawsuit, and it may be best that we allow these other plaintiffs to, to play out, but it also may, there may be some interest in participating in that. Interestingly, as you are probably aware, the legislature passed a further encroachment onto home rule this year with respect to the small cell providers. That would further encroach onto cities and counties' rights with respect to what they can and cannot do in their own, in our own rights of way. So anyway, I'll give you an update as I, after I've talked to the General Counsel about that, mainly to just keep you apprised. We've done everything we can as a city to date with respect to the rights of way. I mean, there are a lot of other issues, but that is the one that's now in litigation with those three cities that I just mentioned.
And Kurt, if I recall correctly, it was pretty narrow, what they were suing on, the grounds they were suing on.
Yes. Good, good question. Two primary points. One, it's invasion into home rule, and two, a taking, because what the 2017 law said is, we can only charge a maximum of $150 for, to, to allow a company to locate on city poles in city rights of way. So notwithstanding where our costs are, or what the, the benefits are that are being given, it really is a, a taking of our city property rights. So that's the, those are the two primary bases, infringement on home rule and a taking. I think that's where they're focused, that was their best, their analysis, the best way to invalidate at least that part of the law.
Well, I think one of the issues that we face, too, is, one of the reasons during the referendum to acquire the electric utility from Progress at the time was for aesthetic purposes, right? So we, this city has paid, has spent millions, tens of millions of dollars to underground our electric utilities and remove poles from the rights of way. And so I was wondering if there's a way in to that from a public taking perspective. I mean, that's a, you know, that's a fairly serious number that they're basically, that they've basically just forfeited for us.
Interestingly, how that, how the current law that was recently approved, I don't think the governor's yet signed it with respect to the small cell providers, how that current line interfaces with the 2017 law and our ordinance, there, I believe, is an exception with respect to municipalities and counties that have undergrounded. So it may actually give us additional protection.
Was that, was that also, wasn't that part of the first, though, that it had to be a coastal city and it, and there had to be a referendum?
Yeah, I think, I think the recent legislation actually has more specifics with respect to that, but you're right, coastal cities was, was an issue there. They actually did a carve-out with respect to certain coastal cities as well.
Right, because we were close to the carve-out, but we didn't make the carve-out.
That's, that's correct. So I haven't evaluated the law because it has not yet become law, but my brief review of it is, we should have, hopefully we'll have some additional protections. But even if we don't, to the extent that we have not yet undergrounded, there still may be issues, because we've still got significant areas in the city to underground.
Okay. Questions for the city attorney? No. Separately, I had another thing for you. I'm trying to remember what it was.
But you're not looking for input from us as to whether we want to participate at this point? You're going to bring us more information.
Correct. If, if it makes sense from a legal standpoint, I'll bring it back to the commission, but at this point, I, I do not see a need to do that. Certainly, I would, of course, bring that back before we turn to lawsuit.
Great. Thank you. No questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Weaver, did you have something? Sorry. Okay. Number seven, Randy, who's presenting this? Chris.
Yeah, Chris. Looking around for him. Sneaking up the left side.
Randy, meet Chris, who works for you.
Sorry, I was in St. Louis watching Albert Pujols the weekend, but I did come back. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having me this afternoon to speak about some potential direction from the commission regarding a potential electric vehicle readiness ordinance. In 2011, our electric utility began installing electric vehicle charging stations at city facilities. In 2012, we saw about 1,000 individual charging sessions. It has grown today where we have had over 5,000 individual charging sessions over a course of a year. So we've seen a substantial increase in the amount of use in those, and we've also added some additional chargers at our city facilities. Our involvement with the Utility Advisory Board is to look at this and, and address any questions they have about electric vehicles and the use of those chargers, which sort of led to the development of looking at potential readiness for other private property when it comes to electric vehicle readiness. So a lot of this will just be a little bit of an education. I'm not sure how familiar all of you are with what's going on in the electric vehicle market, but there's over 38,000 electric vehicles currently registered within the state. Here within the city, our, our recent numbers show that there are 326 electric vehicles registered here in the city of Winter Park. If you watch television, you will see that a lot of the auto manufacturers are pushing towards electric vehicles, especially Volkswagen, as part of their settlement, are really pushing the production of electric vehicles. And there are, are numbers ranging, ranging that we'll see somewhere in the neighborhood of three and a half million vehicles sold in the U.S. by 2030. Now, the majority of this charging typically will occur at home as opposed to a business, and a lot of that today is, is primarily due to the, the time that it takes to charge a vehicle. I think I might skip ahead just to give you a little bit of a quick education on charging of a vehicle. There, there are different levels of charging. There's There's level one, level two, and then you get into fast chargers. A level one is essentially like a 110 outlet, you would plug it into a 110. A level two charger is what we currently have at our city facilities, and that primarily would charge at most vehicles within about five to six hours. You get into some of these DC fast chargers where you could see upwards of 80% charge within 20 to 30 minutes. So they're coming along, but of course, the infrastructure needs to be there to accommodate that. Obviously, our electric utility, as well as our Sustainability Action Plan, really would look at seeing benefits from the adoption of more electric vehicles within the city. From a Sustainability Action Plan that we passed in, in 2015, we had set goals in reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Currently, community-wide transportation makes up 45% of our greenhouse gases produced within the city. Local government, 21% is coming from vehicles. We've actually seen community-wide, an increase of 12% in the greenhouse gas emissions within our vehicles here within our community. So other benefits, potentially quieter, more livable streets. There's also potential fuel and maintenance savings, increased utility revenue, which is, I know, one of the things that our Utility Advisory Board is, is certainly interested in, and it's, as I mentioned, consistent with our goals here in our Sustainability Action Plan. So we are not the first when it comes to electric vehicle readiness programs. There's many across the U.S. and as well as others here within the state of Florida, so we're not necessarily treading new ground here potentially. What we would look at potentially proposing is that in, in new construction, the pre-running of conduit and the sizing of the electric service interior panel would be sized for future level two charging. So it's essentially like adding conduit and a breaker for another dryer in the house. That's sort of something to associate with that. In regards to cost, I've talked with builders that are installing these. Numbers vary depending upon the distance they have to go from the panel to the, to the one charging location, but somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200. Given the average valuation of homes here in the City of Winter Park, last year, the average value of construction was half a million dollars for a home in Winter Park. We're talking less than one hundredth of a percent in regards to construction cost. Potentially, then also looking at, on the commercial side, requiring 20% of all new parking spaces to be EV-ready, basically conduit in the ground, so that in the future, charging stations could be installed. And then developments that would have over 50 parking spaces be required to install one level two charger, and beyond that, 2% of the required parking spaces. We also did offer some language in regards to some retrofitting scenarios. For instance, in our, our code today, if you were to exceed 50% of the valuation of the construction of the structure, you would be required to bring up to today's zoning requirements. Now, we have taken this proposed ordinance to multiple city boards in regards to their thoughts and questions that they had. Obviously, keep Winter Park beautiful, with it being consistent with our Sustainability Action Plan, passed a motion in support. Some of the other items that came up, and also from, from the commission, you know, again, we're not necessarily requiring what type of charger has to be installed, we're just saying the level to which it has to be installed. So you could use a Tesla charger, you could use a ChargePoint charger. We're not dictating what technologies, so if the technology changes, that's not necessarily what we're trying to do. We're trying to just ensure that the, it's easier to install in the future. Most of our residential homes, their garages are finished, so otherwise, you'd be required to potentially have to rip out drywall or run surface conduit, and normally, that's something we wouldn't want to do. We've even seen in installing our charging stations, the additional cost in having to bore lines as opposed to if that conduit hadn't been, been installed prior to that time. So there are a lot of reasons why we see the benefits of potentially just running the conduit in the ground rather than doing that potentially in the future. So overall, we, we've received primarily levels of support from five of the different city boards, and at this point, are just here to address any questions and just to see some head nods in regards to whether this is something worth pursuing here within the city.
Great. Before I open it up to the commission, just one question for you. Chris, can you go back one slide, please? And then back one more? So I'm trying to see, I thought you said commercial. There it is. Is it the third, third? You're actually requiring a charging station, so, so I guess...
Right, so if you had a development that required over 50 parking spaces, you'd be required to actually install a level two charger.
And pay, and pay for the electricity going to that car?
Right. Obviously, the electricity is, well, how, how that property owner would charge for the electricity, that's up to the property owner.
Okay. So, so answer, so you hit us with a $200 estimate, which I appreciate is, is flexible, given, given certain parameters of, of that. Just to have the conduit, so what is, what is to actually install a system, a charging system?
So we, we've installed ChargePoint systems here in the city. Obviously, if we're just talking about the installation of the charger, you have to have an electrician involved as well. If, if we were just installing the station itself, I think the number's around $2,000 to install that actual station. We've had to pay probably more in the neighborhood of five to six when we've had to bore and get the service to that location. So you can see the, the amount of increase in, in price and having to do that retroactively as opposed to when it was done upfront.
Okay, great. That's just my questions. Commissioner Seidel?
Chris, on the residential, at some point, you switch from one box to another based on your amps, correct?
Correct.
So would this kind of be exempt from that calculation? Because that could add, if this puts you over the top?
Potentially it could, yeah, potentially it could.
Yeah, so then there, isn't that like a couple thousand dollar difference between the two boxes?
I don't have the number.
Okay.
Depending upon the, the size.
Okay. Commissioner Sprinkle?
So I'm struggling with people that are going to be required to do this, that are building a new home, that have no intention of ever having an electric car. And so they've had an output of cost that they're never going to use. And so that's my problem with that one. I understand why we're doing it, I'm glad we have, I don't know exactly what you mean when you said you've had support from all the previous boards, but I, I have a hard time asking people to pay for something that they have no intention of using. They may, I mean, I do believe they're going to be around.
One thing I would also say is, currently in the Florida Building Code, there are things that we do for gas vehicles. We pay for carbon monoxide detectors, we pay for 5/8 inch drywall on the ceiling, and we pay for solid core doors. Okay? Some of those may or may not be necessary, I'm not, but the Florida Building Code already does have requirements. Now, obviously, this would potentially be in addition to it, but it's not like today's homeowners aren't paying for a vehicle to be parked in their residence.
I understand, but this would be a City of Winter Park requirement?
Correct.
That we would be imposing on anybody who's building a new home?
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Cooper?
This is a real challenge because... Because of course, we want to reduce our, our emissions. There are 2% now in the United States, electric vehicles. There's going to be 7% by 2030. If you look at China, if you look at Denmark and Norway, they're already up in the 40%. I mean, so it's coming, but the question is, what about standardization within the plug-ins, standardization within the technology? And I have Ethernet running all through my house, and I paid a fortune for that. You know, I had it done specifically because I wanted it, and then everything went wireless, right? So it, it's, it's hard for me to be, to feel comfortable, especially when I hear that the industry hasn't standardized plug-ins. I would think bringing the 240 into the house, I don't know that I see a harm in that, but like you say, that's $200 for every single new house.
A minimum of $200.
Yeah, that we build. So I, I probably would feel more comfortable, even knowing that 93% of the people may not use it, I would feel more comfortable requiring it in aggregated, aggregated parking, parking garages, parking lots. So yes, for the commercial, I think that probably does make sense. Initially, I would have thought that 50 parking spaces was too high. Maybe it should have been much less than that, because I, I do think that's where they should be, is because people charge their home, their cars at home and at work. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with considering this ordinance if it comes forward. Like Sarah, I have a little more hesitation when it comes to the private home, because then you've only got one customer, you know, you don't have 200 people or 50 people using that parking facility. I would like to, if we're going to consider doing this in public areas, I, I researched a lot of articles this weekend, and oh my goodness, all charging stations are not created equal, and some of them look horrible. So if we're going to do it as a community, like we did with our streetlights, I'd like to see some design standards, and that's where I'm at. I want us to encourage people to use electric vehicles. Will having a plug in my garage encourage me to go buy an electric vehicle? I'm going to look at cost, I'm going to look at range, and then I'm going to look at the availability of charging. So I'm not sure that having a plug in my garage would change my mind about that. So maybe not so much in private homes, yes, I could support it in public areas. And thanks for bringing this, and because we must do something, we must do something as a community to fight the, the pollution that we're creating, we must. Thank you.
Commissioner, before I, before I ask Mr. Weaver a question on that for you, you said that, because I, if we're trying to change behavior, which is, which is what you were discussing.
Right, right sizing.
Uh, nobody heard that, so you don't have to say that again. If, if you're talking about change of behavior, how do you feel, because you said if you have the plug-in in the garage already installed, how about having a conduit? Because do you think that that would be changing behavior at all, just having the ability to install that system?
So not putting the 240 in it?
Yeah, just putting the conduit.
Yeah, that's why, I'm really willing to consider it. I just, I'm even willing, if we as a group want to encourage and believe it does.
Well, that's one, you just used the term encourage, and Chris, I don't know if you guys looked at ways to incentivize this.
Well, we, the Utility Advisory Board has looked at, we've studied other municipal utilities within the state as far as what rebates they offer for installations. So OUC right now offers a $200 rebate. JEA offers, depending upon the size of the battery, a $500 or $1,000 rebate for the actual, actual installation of the charging station. So there is, you know, depending upon the budget of the electric utility, the, the ability to potentially provide...
You know, speaking more to the, the single-family new home residential, that in our permit process, can we incentivize the builders to put it in as more of a city-sponsored incentive as opposed to making the, make it a deal that's hard to refuse, if you will? Like, why not go ahead and put it in? And I will, you know, I just, in my house, I have a gas stove and a gas dryer, but I put the plumbing in the wire to make them electric, just if I choose to switch. And so it's, it's not a big cost, but I think, you know, making it incentivized as opposed to mandatory for the residential may be a more prudent way to go about doing it.
So let me turn it over to Mr. Weaver. Take your time.
Just one, if you don't mind, Todd, I wasn't quite finished. One last thing, and that is, is this something the government should be doing? Private industry right now is already put, General Motors has an entire division dedicated to creating this charging infrastructure, so does Tesla, so, you know, so the question is, is that something we should do? I personally believe that it is something that we should, but it is a fair question.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. Chris, so I agree with four out of the five boards on this. I think that's a, a knit of a cost, 1/100th of a percent of the average construction price. And just to be clear, we've done things to change behaviors in building codes for years. We don't use aluminum wiring anymore, for one thing. We use low water use toilets and, and plumbing like that for conservation reasons. And charging at home allows the EV user to charge at a lower rate. Generally, our nighttime electric rates are lower, so I would support this wholeheartedly.
Chris, I'd also have a question regarding the commercial usage, because I think we, many of us who don't have an electric vehicle, pass electric vehicle parking spaces that are vacant while the rest of the parking lot is full. So is there anything under consideration in regards to lowering the count or counting these against parking requirements?
Right now, it's not in excess to the parking requirement, it's just that you would have a parking space that you could charge at.
But it's not relief of? So if the parking requirement for a building is 50 spots, are you saying it's 49 plus this?
No, it's still 50, it's just that you've got one parking space that has a charger at it.
That's dedicated to that, which, which, again...
Depends on how, how it gets enforced. I mean, it could just be like any other parking space, you just, you know, there could be issues in the future.
And that's where I think the trick is, right? Because I think most people, when they pull up to them, automatically assume that's only for electric vehicles. So if you're, if, I, I just think it needs to be something that's under consideration. If you're acquiring a, a landowner to put one of these in, and you're also requiring them to have parking to meet code, then I think that there needs to be some discussion about whether this gets subtracted out of that count if the assumption is that that's only for electric vehicles. It's just, again, aspect to it. So I, I think you have interest from the commission is what I'm hearing, but I'll, I'll certainly ask if there's any kind of push to have this moved forward, to have some language tightened. Would you like a deeper presentation? Would you all like to just take some time with it and get back, and, and have it brought back up so we could get a little bit deeper into it, or what say you, Commissioner?
I'm happy to make a motion that, you heard our concerns, you might want to talk with us individually, but I'm happy to make a motion that we move forward with this, amended as you see fit, based on the conversations that you heard here.
I second that.
So, so I'll say, this is, this is under non-action items, so what we can have, we can have this brought back to us to, I think Commissioner Cooper's motion, all we really need are three nods, to have this brought back to us with the commission's concerns addressed for, for a little bit, for a first reading and, and discussion on it. Is that, is that fine here, folks?
Yeah, I'm okay to move forward and have the read.
Okay, so then I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Sprinkle. So Commissioner Cooper, I'll just take your motion as that, that you're just looking for three nods to move this forward with commission, with commission opinions. Commissioner Sprinkle?
Completely, I completely support that. We'd just like to make sure that you all have the opportunity to hear from some people that are out there in the building world, that are building these single-family homes. That's the only issue that I had in, as a little bit of a concern. And so just bring back to us what you've heard from these folks and what they're saying, because I, I really don't know. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
And Chris, I'll just add one more. We may want to consider a workshop where we get into this a little bit deeper before this comes to the commission on first read, but why don't you ask, I think if you take that up through the city manager and get just some feedback from the commission independently on this, okay?
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you for the presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, folks, we'll take citizen comments closer to the 5:00 hour. We have consent agenda. Folks, what say you?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, any questions up here? We'll open up the Florida Public Comment. Anybody wishing to address the commission on item nine, now is your time? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the Florida Public Comment. All in favor? Opposed? Great, Cindy, or Debbie, please let the record show 5:00. Thank you. Debbie, I didn't even welcome you here today. Thank you for, for filling in for Cindy. We appreciate you being here with us today.
My pleasure, thank you.
Item 10, Mr. Briggs, thank you, sir.
I have a PowerPoint to show you the code, if we can pull that up. I understand, two meetings ago, under Citizen Comments, a representative from the Tipsy Salon stopped by and wondered why they couldn't get a beer and wine license at their location. You wanted to hear on what the rationale was, and it starts with, that's our code, that salons and spas and retail stores are not allowed to get liquor licenses, beer and wine licenses. And so we certainly raised... And so, we certainly raised our eyebrows when we saw the Tipsy floor plan come in for permit in two thousand sixteen, and not only did the name make you wonder what the nature of the business was, but we saw bar in the middle of the floor plan, and so, all the bells and whistles went off, and immediately contacted them to let them know it wasn't permissible to have beer and wine in the salon, and contacted Unicorp, the owners, to make sure that they knew what was going on, and as you saw in the email chain, they assured us that it was just soft drinks, coffee, tea, et cetera, told us that there was a non-compete because of the other restaurants in the shopping center.
Jeff, can I just interrupt for one quick moment? I- is there a difference between beer and wine being handed out, or being, beer and wine being purchased?
Technically, all of the codes apply to both sale and consumption, so technically, you are not supposed to hand it out either.
Technically, sounds like a wiggle room word there.
Technically, because what is at issue for us is signing the zoning conformance, that the state will issue a license permitting sale and consumption. So, we're not out there trying to be the police of whether someone gets a glass of champagne while they're having a spa treatment. What we're trying to be the police of is whether there's sale and consumption, whether you can be a bar at the same time you are being a salon. And so, as you saw on the write-up, this is just an impossible thing to police in terms of what level any business would be. If they've got a beer and wine license, they can be as much as a bar as they want to. If they wanna have one chair that cuts hair, and ninety-eight percent of it be a bar, that would be a salon. So, uh, that's the primary reason, lack of the ability to control, that you wouldn't have a salon, they would operate doing hair and facials during the day, and the other half of the floor plan would be a bar, open till two AM, which is what our code permits. So, we did have the opportunity in between those two meetings to talk to the P and Z at a work session, they were not in favor of changing the code, and, uh, obviously, for those, uh, good reasons, uh, we don't believe that we should cross that line that's unenforceable in terms of percentages.
Okay, Commissioner Cooper.
I'm ready to move to approve the staff's recommendation for denial.
I, I'm happy to hear the motion, but I'd certainly like to see if there's comments before it, if, if you'd allow, if you're okay with that. Great, uh, Mr. Weaver, any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, ask Jeff what the original rationale was for this ordinance. Did we have some issues in the past, or are we just expecting something bad as opposed to axe throwing?
We, we constantly get requests from retail stores, from salons, that want beer and wine licenses, just another way to increase the revenue stream. And so, again, since we can't police how much of a bar and how much of a retail store it is, uh, that's why it's been in the code for years, is just not to cross that line.
Okay, anybody else, right inside? Nope, uh, okay, with that, Commissioner Cooper.
My motion stands.
I'll second.
Okay, let's open up the floor to public comment, and we wish to address the commission on this item, which again, is a motion to support the existing, um, the existing code and not change it, to allow for this usage. Please, sir. Uh, you can fill out the form afterwards, thank you.
I'm one of the owners of Tipsy Salon Bar.
Just have your name and address for the record, thank you.
Oh, my address is, uh, thirteen oh five Morgan Stanley, Suite six three nine, Winter Park. Um, we've, we've had a salon, um, our salon business, uh, since two thousand and six. Um, every city, uh, our first location was Wellington, Florida, um, they initially denied our request for a beer and wine license. They finally approved, um, they brought up the same, uh, concerns. Um, another location, Narow, um, also denied in the beginning, we brought up our concerns, they approved it just for a special, um, just for a special, uh, business, just for us. Um, we've not had any issues. Uh, we open from nine AM to seven PM, and that's it. Uh, we don't do anything otherwise. Um, it's just, like you said, it's an increased revenue for our salon, um, where instead of giving complimentary drinks, um, which I think a lot of salons do in the area, um, but this, this is our concept. Um, like I said, this is our corporate, one of our corporate locations. We have multiple, um, licensees and franchisees that come in, in other states, um, other cities, uh, where we train, um, for this area. Um, but like I said, it, we've not had any issues since two thousand and six. Um, no issues with regulations, law, police officers, or anything of any sort from the law standpoint. Um, it, it's, it's a huge burden on us, 'cause about ten thousand dollars comes out of our pocket, uh, because of this. Um, and like I said, it's just not sustainable for our business, um, to do that every month. Um, so, it's a huge overhead for us. And like I said, a lot of other locations, um, the city allows exemption for our salon, um, and you can go by our track record, we've never had any issues, and we don't, we won't open as a bar, um, like there is concerns of.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Win. As the applicant, if, uh, if you'd like to make comment, once other folks have commented, we'll certainly have you back. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the floor to public comment. Um, I, I think the challenge here is, you start making exceptions to it, and it, and it just opens, it opens it up. Um, I understand there's no, he's, you know, the, the usage, they're not, people aren't going in there getting hammered and having a pedicure, uh, nor anybody with scissors, uh, kinda hammered, but, um, I.
Some nice names, tipsy convenience.
Right, right, hammered, right. Uh, so, so I feel, I feel for Mr. Win on this, but I just don't think, I, I'm not ready to make a change to the code at this time. Anybody else, before we vote?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'll just add, it, it, in my mind, if all the salons were coming to us and they'd work with staff on some rules and regulations that all the salons could follow, I would be more interested to see something like that than granting an exception, for one. And so, for me, that's if there was something that, you know, the chamber or whoever got together with all the salons and they came back and said, we've all talked about it, we've worked it out, this is what we'd like to do, and we're all on board with it, that's a li- little easier to get behind than just having one place come in and say, I wanna be able to serve alcohol and not really address the other salons.
Well, I think one of the challenges too, is when does it become a bar that cuts hair, or a salon that serves beer, right? And then you, 'cause you're getting into different regulations regarding the code in regards to what a bar is required to provide.
Well, and then, but are there kind of certain limits that you can put on those? Like, for example, you can't sell more than two glasses of wine to any patron or something like that, but that, to me, this, the salon folks figure that out, come to us and change it for all salons, not us change it specifically one salon at a time.
Commissioner Cooper, did you have something?
I actually have, um, a question for staff. What other businesses fall into the same general category that would, as a salon, as a hair salon or a nail salon?
Well, I mean, the closest thing related to cosmetol, cosmetology is massage, so you could expect, you know, massage, NV, and the, and those kinds of businesses to be next.
I'm just trying to think about what, what, um, commis, right, Commissioner Seidel is considering. I think that's a much broader, I think it's a much broader grouping of businesses than just a nail salon, that's my only thought about what you're recommending.
We, we also had a cigar shop that wanted to have an alcohol license, and that didn't meet the criteria, so it's similar to.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the lines the city has drawn now, they served us well.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I have a question for the city attorney. Kurt, um, if this applicant were to go to the state and get a liquor license, um, does our, well, does state law preclude our law here?
The state has preempted the licensing, uh, and the, we have the right as a city to deal with the location, uh, of the businesses and sale of alcohol, so we're fine with respect to that, as long as we keep it in the realm of a zoning, um, the zoning arena, uh, even, in fact, the state will not approve a license unless the city zoning will sign off on it. So, as long as our zoning code is in good shape, then we should be fine, notwithstanding what the state says.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, folks, I think we've all said our piece. Debbie, would you please read the role on this item? Which is for, uh, staff recommendation of, uh, no change to the code.
Yes, we're gonna listen now.
Uh, yes means we're not changing the code. Thank you.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Win, thank you for at least bringing this to us. I know it's not what you wanted to hear, but we appreciate you taking the time to come and present this to us and investing in our community as well and opening your shop. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, we have ten B, who is handling that? Nobody's jumping up.
I've, I've got it, and, and we do have Bobby Palta here with CBRE.
Thanks, Bobby, for being here tonight.
But as you recall, back in two thousand and fifteen, we bought the property at twenty-six-hundred Lee Road for nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, knowing at the time, we, we paid more than market value, but it was, uh, for the purpose of eliminating a certain business that was taking place there. Uh, and we've had, I think, three different, or two different contracts that have fallen through.
Randy, can I rephrase that for you? It wasn't a matter of shutting down a business that was there, it was just an opportunity to perhaps change the usage on the site?
Right, because the, the criminal activity was taking place over and above the business that was there.
I wanna be careful with our language, that it wasn't to shut down a business that was there, it was.
The, uh, and so.
Shut down the illegal business that was there.
Yes.
It was, we had the opportunity to buy a piece of property, and, uh, we thought we could have a different use on the property. Go ahead, Randy, I'm sorry.
And we've had a, we've had a couple of contracts that have fallen through, we've got a, another contract on the table for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the cash offer, uh, staff's recommendation that we move forward. Uh, be glad to answer any questions, and, as I said, Mr. Palta is here, if you have any questions of, of the agent.
Anybody for the city manager, Mr. Seidel?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Randy, the other offers on the property, was it when they got into some details, they couldn't fit what they were trying to do, or?
Well, the first one backed out because of, of environmental concerns, and then, and then the second one, I, I can't recall, I don't remember why the second one backed, they just, they, they never finally, never signed the contract, they just, they, they made the offer and just sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, and just never came back to, to close, as I recall, Bobby, I.
Okay, no, thank you.
I'd just like to move it.
Okay. Any minute?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, comments? Um, we have about a million, over a million dollars invested in the property, withheld the property since January of two thousand and fifteen, um, that's four years. Uh, the recent report that came to us, one of the UCF things, said that, um, property values are up fourteen percent since four years, for the last four years. So, I, I guess from my perspective, I say hold out for a better offer.
Mr. Weaver?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, I just found out over the weekend that axe throwing is a, uh, popular sport these days, and that's what this venue is going to be used for. And, uh, yes, it's, it's in the minutes there, or in the, uh, agenda item. Yeah, the, the wound is not from an axe. Um, so, it, if we're turning down, uh, alcohol for a, a nail salon, um, you know, I, I wonder if, if this is really something that, uh, is conducive to better behavior than what was there before. Um, the other thing is, I wanna check my stock portfolio to see if I have the insurance company, um, that would insure this particular venue. Um, but all joking aside, um, this just doesn't seem like a Winter Park kind of thing, and, um, serving beer and wine at an axe-throwing venue, um, concerns me a little bit.
Commissioner Cooper?
And we need a better offer on the property.
All right, you said that already, come on. Commissioner Sprinkle, do you have anything? Now, is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to present? Anything? Who am I looking at from staff? No?
Can I get clarification on what is going to go in there?
Sure.
Well, it is, it, there's two, two doctors that are buying it, maybe they're in the business of fixing axe wounds, I'm not sure, but, but, uh, but the, two doctors are buying it, and it is their intention of putting an, an axe-throwing venue, which is a very popular, uh, spot, I don't know if sports is the right word, Commissioner, but very activity, uh, and, you know, these, this business model is, is all over the place, it's not a, you know, it's, it's not, I don't know how to describe it, other than, that it's no different than dart throwing and that type of thing at, at a, at a bar, but it's a, it's a popular venue. Uh, as, as far as holding out for a better price, keep in mind, I think it appraised at under eight hundred thousand when we bought it. We spent more for it because trying to clean up the illegal activities and reduce the amount of resources we were spending policing the illegal activities. And so, you know, we can hold, we certainly hold out for a better price, we're not hurting, hurting for the money, uh, but we didn't buy it at market value, I just wanna make sure, make, make that clear to the commission.
So, I, I think that's fair, it's also, you know, it is, it's worth what people pay for, and not only that, while other properties have gone up, um, you know, this is a property on Lee Road, it's, uh, the carrying cost for four years of not, uh, of not having anything here too, uh, that's not factored into this price, so we can continue to sit on it and continue to, uh, look at lost opportunity costs on this property as well. So, I, I'm not in favor of that, I think, uh, it's close to what we paid for it. We are replacing it with maybe a usage that some on this dais don't care for, I'm not saying that I'm gonna go sign up for axe throwing, but I would tell you that it's, it is one of the, you're seeing shuffleboard is becoming a big thing in some of these locations, uh, there's other bowling is become, coming back in some of these areas, in some of these, uh, facilities. So, uh, it's a very popular, the demographics of the, I hate to say it, of the axe-thrower, of the patrons, um, is pretty high, so, um, I can support this, and again, I doubt you'll see me in there wielding an axe, um, but, uh, I do think it provides another opportunity, and I think that the pricing is actually, uh, pretty favorable at this site. So, let's open up the floor to public comment, oh, we already took public comment, um, so, did we take public comment? No, we didn't. Let's open up the floor to public comment, I apologize, I was thinking of the previous, uh, previous item. Anybody wishing to address the commission? No? Are there any, is the applicant here? No? Okay, uh, so we're gonna close the floor to public comment, um, any other final comment before we vote? Mr. Seidel?
Yeah, no, I just, you know, we've had this property for some time, and it's, you know, and if they're doing what it's zoned to do, and it says they're not asking for any special grants or anything, the approval of the purchase, right now, we're just approving the purchase, if they come in anything that's different than code, they'd have to come before us again anyway. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to get rid of the property, or shall I say, get the property back on the tax rolls, if you will, and, uh, I don't think the price is unreasonable. So, given what we've been.
Jeff, can you answer a question for me? What is the current library property zoned for?
Our public library?
Yes.
Is zoned R four?
R four. So, does that mean that members of this commission would not take anything, and that's probably the highest price that someone would pay for that, would be R four, probably the highest designation, right? So, for, um, my point is, if we're looking at pricing, then, then I think there needs to be some consideration given to, to a bunch of things. I don't think R four is appropriate there, but it is the highest and best use, so, if cost is the only thing that's affecting, then we're looking at other pieces of property around the city, and we're gonna hold that, and I, I don't think that's what we wanna be doing.
Since you let me come up here, the other aspect of pricing, why we paid what we did, was the billboard on the site, which is going away in a year. And so, that's a two hundred, four hundred thousand dollar asset that we will be ridding from the city, so that was an important reason also for the acquisition.
And Jeff, is that an absolute, even if we sell the property, that that goes away?
We are not selling the lease, we are just selling the property, we are maintaining the ability to terminate that lease in July of next year, and we've already given clear channel notice of that intent.
Thank you, and, and they are relative to, um, relative to the appreciation on this property, relative to other properties. I don't think we were provided that analysis by our commercial realtor, um, and, and certainly that would be available, something that I'd be very interested in looking at is a, um, a growth rate since January of two thousand and fifteen. However, um, the reason that I do believe that the, uh, price, um, could be better, given the appreciation in the market, I do appreciate that we paid more than, we paid more than fair market value, perhaps when we bought it, but we did that because there was a. But we did that because there was a use that was, that was causing great legal issues for our city. And I do not, and I am not ignoring the use of, the use requested here. So my reasoning is that I do not feel that the price is fair, given the appreciation in the market. That's my reasoning, but I'm not ignoring the use. I don't want anyone to think I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Bobby, would you take a seat for a quick second? Bobby, you've been in this market for how long?
I have been here for 18 years now.
Okay, and you feel this is a fair price for this piece of property?
I do, because I fielded all the calls from all of the different prospects that are interested in this property. When I do get to the part about the price is where I lose most of them. So to address what you had said about pricing earlier, you do not have to take this $950,000 offer. It is, it is your option to counter back, and that is something you can do. They have signed this offer, and they are ready, willing, and able to close on this property within 90 days or so, or less. In regards to the appreciation, that is true. There's been great appreciation with this market cycle. This particular property though is only six tenths of an acre. And it's very limiting when you take into account the setbacks, the actual access that's in and out of the property. It's very limiting for the users that will go here in this part of I- drive, in this part of Lee Road. And, you know, the previous prospect we had, they backed away because they could not get corporate approval from a large corporation that thought it might be a good location, but it didn't work out in the end. So...
Thanks Bobby.
May I ask a question before you get away? I had a piece of property in Washington DC at 911. That property sat on the market for 16 months. It had never sat, none of those properties had ever sat on the market that long. Could it be that the delay is influenced by the construction on I4, since this property is at I4?
To be honest, that's actually helped a little bit, because the new bridge is closer to the property. If you drive by, the visibility is a little bit better than before. So that has actually helped with this particular prospect. So...
Well, thank you. I would have not assumed that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, would you please read the role on this item?
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
No.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes, thank you. Bobby, thanks for all the work on it. We appreciate it. Okay, we have 11A. Mr. Artiman, are we, sorry, let me get to my item here. Do you all need a break at all? Are you guys good? Allison, thank you.
Okay. All right, this public hearing item is a lot split request for 1298 Howell Branch Road. And I'm sure the commission is very familiar with this property, except maybe our newest commissioner, Commissioner Weaver, since this was the property that was previously requested to be used as a assisted living facility. But when those plans didn't work out, the applicant decided to change their request into a for lot, single-family subdivision. This is the layout of the subdivision that was approved in June of 2018 by the commission. The use of this property as four single-family homes was favorable to the neighbors because each one of these lots is a lakefront lot, which means that each lot individually would come before the planning and zoning board for a lakefront review. So the neighbors will be able to see the plans for the homes that are being presented for each of these lots individually. And they will be able to see how the homes would look across the lake. And so the neighbors would definitely be involved in that public hearing process for each of those lots. The reason for this subsequent public hearing is that the applicant has decided to change the layout and orientation of lots three and four to the east near that sinkhole. And so the benefit to this new layout is the fourth home to the east is now closer up towards the street at Howell Branch Road. So the neighbors on the south side of the lake will now only see three homes instead of four homes. So the reconfiguration of this lot meets all of the R3 development standards. It passes the zoning test. It passes the comprehensive plan test. And it carries the same conditions that were recommended and approved with the original layout in terms of the subdivision requirements and signal upgrades. So this request is coming before you with a positive recommendation from the planning and zoning board and staff.
Great. Questions for Allison. Mr. Seidel, I'll start with you.
Yeah, Allison, I just had a quick question. I'm sorry I didn't get to look into it beforehand. But we had went through the lakefront lot splits, and I thought there was a minimum lot size on the lakefront lot splits. Is that something that doesn't apply because we're R3 or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so do we have any other R3 land that's on lakes, or this is the only piece, I guess?
Um, I can't think of any off the top of my head that are R3 on a lake.
Okay.
That's not fair. Try to stump Jeff instead.
Other than maybe, maybe the...
Okay, no, I was just, I was just wondering, and it's, yeah, no, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
Allison, you mentioned that this complied with the comprehensive plan 500-foot test. What was the results of that? What was your average and your mean lot size?
Yep, sure. I didn't put it on the PowerPoint, but... So the difficulty with doing the comp plan test in this case was that this property is zoned R3, and they're developing the R3 lots as single-family lots. So what we did is we compared all the other single-family lots within 500 feet. And so the average lot size was 20,361 square feet, and the median lot size was 14,070 square feet.
And so do all of these comply with that? I thought you had two that were much lower than that.
When you're comparing the dry land area of them, two of them compared favorably to the median lot size versus the average lot size.
But they were below medium and they were below average, and the comp plan test talks to average, does it not?
Average and median.
And they were below both of those. So we have two of them that don't really comply with the comp plan test for the other single-family homes. Is that correct?
Technically, yes.
Yeah, okay. Technically, always love, I understand the R3 issue here.
Exactly.
I do understand the R3 issue here. Also, on lakefront lots, I thought we had a prohibition on creating any flag lots on their lakefront.
That is for R1 AAA development.
Okay, so it's for single-family homes on lakefronts?
With that zoning district, yes.
Now, when they came last year, they met the comp plan test and they created standard lots without flag lots. So what is the hardship that's making this impossible for them to do that this year?
You have that.
Because last year they did. They met, they met the comprehensive plan test. They did not create flag lots on the lake. So there must be some hardship that they've become aware of in the last year that we are not aware of.
There's no hardship test on this. Is there a hardship test on this?
Because they're zoned R3, so...
No, they just replanted. It's not...
If you look at the graphic on the lot furthest on the right, you see the tiny little area of buildable lot. And that was just too small to put a house. That's why this next slide, by reconfiguring the lots, they've provided a little more land to put a house up by the street. It's the only change they're making.
And two of the lots now fall below the average of the other single-family homes within 500?
Understanding that the comp plan test only applies to other R3 lots and there are none.
So we just have, since there is no way to actually do the comp plan test, then what we have to decide is are we willing to allow a flag lot on the lake, which violates our policy for other single-family homes on the lakes? And are we willing to allow in R1, and are we willing to allow two much smaller lots than the average of other single-family homes within a 500-foot radius? And if we are, then we ought to all vote yes.
One other note about doing the comprehensive plan test in the lot areas is we did use the entire parcel size, not the dry land area.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel?
So comparing it, you know, using the numbers of the entire lot, including the water, would make that lot larger, I believe by .2 acres.
Mr. Seidel, it's up to you then, Mr. Weaver.
No. How much coordination has gone on with the neighborhood for this process to get us where we are today? I know in the previous processes, there's a lot going on. Has there been any kind of involvement with the neighbors up to this point?
We've been talking to Nancy and Barry, and they're here tonight.
Yep. We noticed everybody within 500 feet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver? Did you have something?
Yes. I obviously want to hear from the neighbors. So a couple of things that concern me. There's a dip in Howell Branch Road here. And I know this land is quite low in elevation. So what, can you give me some elevations? I see the normal high water and on a couple of dates there. But can you tell me what the building lot elevations are and what the center line of Howell Branch is in that area?
Well, these homes will have to be built equal to the crown of the road or the curb level on Howell Branch Road. This land is significantly up above the water levels. There's quite steep cliffs going down, not just to the sinkhole, but to the other lake.
But to lay Mr. Weaver's concerns, they're not asking for any variances there. This will meet code in regards to that area.
It'll meet code, and they'll have to meet all the retention requirements, not just for the homes themselves, but also for the common drives.
Okay, thank you. Okay, folks, Allison, thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Would you like to present? You certainly have the opportunity. We'll grant you that.
I'll make myself available.
Okay. I'll also have you back after public comment if people have some questions that you'd like to address as well. But you do, the floor is yours, sir.
All right. So last time we were...
Would you just do me a favor, your name and address for the record, please?
Urban Hetchveria, representing 1298 Howell Branch, but I live at 2944 West Bay in Bel Air, Florida. Last time we were in front of the commission or the council, we did get approval to build for, to have four single-family home lots. After we started speaking to home designers and some, just to know exactly, you know, the intricacies of what people are looking for in homes nowadays, we noticed that it would be beneficial to change just one lot line. And that's that lot line between three and four that we were looking at in order to make, design a home that is more conducive to lifestyle and living here in Florida. That is the only change we're asking for. And that's what I'm here to answer. Any additional questions if you have. But as these lots sell, as was mentioned before, every owner will have to come or every builder will have to come in front of the city council, address the trees, address any of the other concerns. Anything that's, at that point, will be addressed if there's additional concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Ms. Cooper?
Yes. When we approved this last year, we did have, are you the same owner or?
I'm one of the three.
Okay, so you've been through this whole process.
Yes, three years, three years and 50 pounds heavier.
So I understand that. So, that's right. There's some advantages in there. But at that time, you did create four lots that all met the average of the single-family building lots within 500 feet, and you didn't have to create any flag lots. So flag lots are, and I understand this is R3, but flag lots are something that our policy as a city is to prohibit in single-family lakefront zone. And I understand the nuance of that. But we are trying to emulate single-family. And that's, that is what you're building, is single-family. So my question to you is, what happened that made it, is it just that this lot is too small? And is, you have to build your house smaller? Is that the reason? Or you could build three houses without any problem and still meet all our standards? So is it just that that house is going to be, how big is that house going to be?
Well, there is no, we have not made a decision on specific homes.
But how big could it be, I should ask?
These homes can be anywhere between 4,000 and 6,000 square feet.
Okay, on that lot that you're thinking is too little, it could still support...
Oh, the little lot, you're too...
The one that you, the one that I understand is the reason you had to make a flag lot. The one that forced you into making a flag lot?
So can I clarify? She's referring to the previous, the previous lot as depicted up there in the upper right of the four. Commissioner Cooper's simply asking, what size home could you build on that site?
Right, what drove you to need a flag lot?
Well, again, and I'm not, our engineer is in Canada on vacation, so...
Blow it up!
I'll try to do the best I can. Frankly, when they went to do test fits of different model homes, they came back and it was a request by the home engineers and a civil engineer that it would be beneficial to change that lot line in order to fit a home that was conducive. One of them was an elderly population would probably prefer a master bedroom on the first floor. So in order to alleviate the concern of maybe a potentially an elderly person or somebody aging in place, needing to go up the stairs, they, that was one of the concerns of bringing down a master bedroom, which would need, which would need lot three to be a little wider to fit your common living spaces and a master bedroom.
Thank you. I appreciate that sensitivity. Just, oh, the folks, Jeff, how big of a house can be built on that lot?
There's about...
As it was proposed last year?
There's about 2,900 square feet of buildable area. The problem is the triangular shape of that lot. You can't fit a rectangular house efficiently into that triangle. That's why they're trying to shape, reshape the buildable area of the lot within the setbacks.
So how big of a house could be built on that lot?
Well, if you didn't mind a triangle-shaped house, you could build 3,000 square foot house.
Okay. So 3,000 is the, that's the, that's what my brother was looking for. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, folks, what say you? I'd like to provide a motion for the public to respond to before I open the floor.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, great. Then let's open up the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to address the commission on this item, now is your time. No, this is on this item specifically.
Thank you. Took a long mouth.
Yeah, you took a long, go ahead.
Don't you guys know this routine yet?
Yes, I know. Here we go again. Nancy Freeman, 1055 Tuscany Place, Winter Park.
Barry Render, 2630 Via Tuscany, Winter Park.
So we're pleased, again, that this is moving in the direction of single-family homes. And we feel that that's a much better outcome for this property. We still have some concerns about ingress and egress and parking, availability for four homes. We also want to point out the historical flooding that has taken place in this property, because the last time, when the memory care wanted to squish it a little closer to the lake, we did point out with our drone photography that it was underwater. So I still have concerns about that. You want to address the...
I'd like, if the property goes forward with four, four homes on the property, I'd like to bring a simulation to show you what will happen to traffic if each of those four homeowners gets two package deliveries a day. And if the gardeners come with their trailers and try and get in and out, this property cannot be entered and exited with four homes squeezed out. It's just not possible. So, I mean, theoretically, if someone wants to buy a property and never have two guests visiting on the same day that the other properties have two guests visiting, that's fine. You should know that within a half a mile, three blocks, there is virtually no street parking whatsoever. So if you're going to have guests, Mayor Leary, they're going to have to walk three blocks to get to your property to visit. And if you're going to expect a package to be delivered, and there's one already being delivered, both trucks are in gridlock and they can't get up. So all I'm pointing out to the developer and to the commission is that it would make sense to have three houses on the property, to take a little flag lot or whatever it's going to be, and to turn it into a cul-de-sac so you can actually get in and out if you have to. And that's excluding the possibility of the emergency vehicle getting out. excluding the possibility of the emergency vehicle getting out, and the garbage trucks trying to deliver and, and pick up eight garbage cans on Howell Branch. I'm assuming that people will dump their garbage onto the street itself, whose garbage truck could certainly never get onto this property. So it's going to affect the traffic flow. There's, what, 30,000 cars a day? And it's going to be impossible for cars to come and go. We get five package deliveries a day at our house. Imagine if the average person did that with four homes. You're in trouble. They're just not going to, you're not going to be able to get out, that's all. So it's a very nice development. We're certainly better than the memory care facility, but I don't think it's going to work. But if they want to build it and someone's going to buy it where you can't get in and out, that's up to you and up to the developer, I guess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rinder. Thanks, Ms. Freeman. Anyone else? Okay, let's close the floor to public comment. Sure, Ms. Roca Vera, I'll certainly give you the opportunity.
I just would like, if we could go back to the new layout, is it possible? Okay. I do want to point out the length of the driveways. I know there's a concern about guests coming. All these driveways, some of the driveways could fit 20 vehicles in the driveway. I also want to state that if you do drive down Howell Branch, how many homes do enter and exit? And we're paying for the light to be reconfigured, so everybody's going to exit and enter at that signal. And we did meet with all the departments numerous times in this new process to make sure all their concerns were addressed, and they have been satisfied.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we've heard from the applicant, we've all weighed in, and we've heard from the public too. If anybody has some last comments before we move to vote, certainly the chair will entertain. Mr. Seidel?
In response to something that was just said here about, you know, whether this would work and whether these, these lots would, you know, people would want to live there, we did some lot splits where one of them was a flag lot, and I thought no one would want to live back there. And that was actually the first lot sold because someone wanted to live back there because it was private. So what I see is, you know, favorable for me to live, someone else doesn't. So I think you would find, you know, that, you know, people would tolerate kind of what's going on here. They're moving into it new. And so for me, just, I kind of learned from that experience that just because you don't like it, doesn't mean someone else won't.
Ms. Sprinkle, do you have anything?
Nothing other than to say that if we could find a way to take care of all the deliveries and all of these problems that we have with all the people that are working in your yards, we'd have, I mean, that looks like everywhere else I try to travel in Winter Park right now. It's a real issue, but I don't think you can, you've got quite a bit of parking in here. You do.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Seidel. It was not an issue, Greg, of whether I liked it or not. Our code for lakefront, this is one of the few things that still says we prohibit it. So that was my issue. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, any last comments? Okay, great. Then Debbie, would you please read the role on this item?
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes, thank you. And Nancy and Barry, thank you. I know you all have been involved with this. I lost you. Where'd you go?
It's a lot better.
Oh, there you are, standing up. I was looking in the chairs. You have worked on this for a long time, so we appreciate the community's interaction. We also appreciate, Ms. Roca Vera, thank you for taking the time to work with the community. And while everybody's not perfect with it, it's, I think we are in a much better place today than we were just a few years back. So thank you all for working together with the city and one another to really have a nice project moving forward. Okay, folks, we're going to open up the floor to public comment. On anything that's not for, that's not on this agenda item, not on this agenda, Ms. Erickson, this is your time, and anybody else, and then we're going to take just a quick 15-minute break after this. So anybody wanting, wishing to address the commission on anything that's not on this agenda, now is your time. And Linda, first of all, I've got to say, before you get started, that Leaf got his hole in one.
Yes.
I saw him the day after he got his hole in, I saw him the day he got his hole in one, so it was...
He's so happy.
Yeah, he was very happy.
It's his third one, if you can believe it.
Well, he gave me credit because I saw him the night before. I saw him the night before. He said, "You must have been good luck," so I'll take the credit for that.
No, he was, he was so happy. My name is Linda Erickson. I live at 535 North Interlock in here in Winter Park, and actually, I've already sent a note to all of you on this. And I just wanted to come and sort of repeat it here so that it goes on the minutes or it becomes more official. And that is, I was driving down Park Avenue the other night, and I, I, it was getting dark, and I looked, and I said, "What the heck? There's a neon sign on Park Avenue." And so I told Leaf, "Stop, I've got to take a picture." So I took a picture, and I came home, and I sent it to a bunch of friends, and I said, "Okay, I'm not saying anything. I just want opinions." And they are like, "What the heck is happening?" So I know that Mr. Wiggins has said that there is a code that allows canopy signage. I'm fine with canopy signage, but I think there's a big difference between a canopy sign hanging down and a neon canopy sign. And I'm just hoping that something can be done that makes it so others don't follow suit with bigger, brighter neon signs. It's just not, it's so not Park Avenue. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson.
And thank you for all you all do, because you do a lot of good things.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we're going to close the floor to public comment. I would ask just about the neon sign. I know there is a, I know we prohibit neon signs, but so can you just, yeah, and it doesn't look like it's full neon. It looks a little bit retro. What's the, can you give...
Well, unfortunately, we don't prohibit neon. We certainly can tweak the code. The biggest issue with this sign is it's facing the street instead of facing the pedestrians. We're going to get them to reorient it, but that, it's also at the full six max square feet, and probably that's too big, because almost everyone else has less than that under canopies. So we'd be happy if there's three nods to bring that back about neon and the size.
Also, can we look at the Park Avenue design guidelines?
Can I just make sure I have three? Do we have three?
Yes.
Okay, we've got three.
So we didn't change anything about the sign code, so what happened?
We didn't change anything. You got to approve.
It's never been prohibited neon in the downtown, so, but we certainly can address it. We got my three nods.
Okay.
Jeff, Ms. Mayor, if I could, I thought we had some sign discussions before, and there were some kind of restrictions on the lights you could put.
Yeah, you can't have interior illuminated signs, meaning plastic box with light bulbs inside. You can identify with a little lighting behind the letters like Tunis does, but that's the distinction, but there isn't a prohibition on neon, so...
Is it also, is it covered by the Park Avenue design guidelines?
In the same way, so...
It's not?
We looked there first to see if we could use that.
Look at both those and, yeah. So that'll come back to us, or how is that going to happen? What are we going to do?
Folks, let's reconvene at 5:25. Thank you very much.
Back to, back to work here. Uh, Mr. Arteman, would you please read both of these and we'll have a simultaneous public hearing and we'll have separate votes.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number blank and ordinance of the city of Winter Park, Florida, amending chapter 58 land development code, article Roman numeral one, comprehensive plan, future land use map to change from a medium density residential future land use designation to an office future land use designation on the properties at fourteen nineteen and fourteen twenty-one Trevillian Avenue, more particularly described herein providing for conflict severability and an effective date. And ordinance number blank and ordinance amending chapter fifty-eight land development code, article Roman numeral three, zoning, amending the official zoning map to change from medium density multifamily residential R dash three to office O dash one district zoning on the properties at fourteen nineteen and fourteen twenty-one Trevillian Avenue, more particularly described herein providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
As the city attorney just read the titles to two of the three agenda items, uh, the first two are related. They're talking about changing the future land use in the comp plan and the zoning from, from multifamily to office on two properties and together with that is a conditional use for the actual project, a two-story now twenty-five thousand square foot building. And we're having a simultaneous public hearing. It's been a while since we tabled this last time. I don't know, does the commission want to do the ex parte communication stuff now or wait?
Sure, if you'd like. Has anybody had any conversations? Mr. Seidel, I'll start with you.
Uh, yep, I've spoken with the applicant, Trey Vick, uh, multiple times, uh, including uh, last night as well. And I spoke with a couple of the, uh, neighbors.
Ms. Sprinkle?
I've had numerous, uh, emails. Don't think I've had any conversations, uh, this time around.
Staff is included?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Cooper.
Yes, I've had numerous conversations with, um, the developer and the residents of the Gay Road area and staff.
Mr. Weaver?
I have had, um, numerous conversations with the neighbors and staff.
Um, I haven't had any conversations with anyone except to say hello to Mr. Vick when he walked in. And, um, I have read the materials that have been emailed me. Mr. Briggs.
Okay, the four properties that are involved is, as you see in the overhead, the fourteen twenty-four and fourteen twenty-eight Gay Road properties. That's twenty-five percent of the site and they're zoned office now. And then as we go to the left or to the west, the four nineteen and fourteen twenty-one properties, which is seventy-five percent of the site, they are zoned R three and prospectively being asked to be changed to office zoning. And this graphically shows those two lots in blue that are office and the other two properties in brown that are, uh, multifamily residential, uh, future land use and zoning. And what's important to point out to everyone is that this property can be and is going to be developed either as proposed or in conformance with the zoning because the property owner is very anxious to sell this property. Uh, she's elderly, she's not in good health, she needs the money to cover her, uh, medical needs as she is aging. And so the option, if this is not approved, is that the two lots, the two lots that are zoned office can be used to build at maximum a two-story eight thousand square foot office building. And that would just go straight to building permit. It's not over ten thousand square feet. And then the fourteen nineteen, fourteen twenty-one zoned R three per our code could be used for up to twenty-two townhouses, two-story, but up to twenty-two townhouses. So when we are thinking about the plan we're going to see tonight, we also have to think about the plan that we're not going to see if they build in accordance with the zoning because they can build a two-story office, eight thousand square feet. They can build twenty-two townhomes. Something's going to happen on this site. But what the current property contract holders-
Jeff, if I could just interrupt you there real quick. Have, has anyone really looked at a site plan for those and that's the numbers you're coming up with?
That's what the zoning would permit when you just look at what the zoning says.
Okay, but it hasn't been laid out to make sure everything would work, work at this point. Okay, I just want clarification on that. Thank you.
But what we're here for tonight is what the current contract holder wants to do, which is, uh, to build a two-story twenty-five thousand square foot office in the layout that you see. And there have been some significant changes that have been made since this plan was last on our agenda in March. The first one that is, uh, certainly very important is that the previous plan had a driveway, as it does now, it goes up to the north to Gay Road, but also had a driveway that went down to Trevillian Avenue. So there was the ability to drive through, to cut through the site, which might be a convenience for folks that live in the area, but it also opens up a cut-through route for anyone that travels down Executive or Country Club or vice versa, uh, in order to avoid the seventeen ninety-two Webster intersection. And so that was a concern at our public hearing. So what the applicants have done is, and we'll get into more details, close that driveway onto Trevillian so there's no way to drive through, to cut through the site any longer. The other thing that they have done that you can sort of see on this black and white overhead is on the far left-hand side, the far western side, they have created a pedestrian bike path that would allow folks to walk or ride their bikes in between Gay Road and Trevillian. So in terms of connectivity, folks at Calarni Bay wanted to walk up to the old Kmart center to use a restaurant or a store. You'd be able to do that without getting in your car, uh, vice versa. And so that is meant to be an amenity, uh, for the residents in the area. The third major change they've made is that they've increased the setback of this building onto Gay Road. It was at a ten-foot minimum setback. They pushed it back another ten feet, so it's twenty feet off of the property line, roughly about thirty to thirty-five feet away from the curb pavement of Gay Road. And then lastly, probably most importantly, is that they've made the building smaller. What we saw before was thirty thousand square feet, now it's twenty-five thousand square feet. So that's been a seventeen percent reduction in the building size, less traffic, obviously less parking as well. And so what you have, uh, in this more illustrative colored elevation is again the same location of the proposed office building on the eastern side. It's done purposefully to keep it as far away from the two adjacent residential properties, Chateau de Lac, Calarni Bay, and that the layout of the parking, uh, then remains on the western side of the property. Uh, this is elevations of what the building would look like in terms of architecture from the interior of the property. Uh, this is a little further shot, but what you see in the foreground of this shot is the beginning of the pedestrian path as it would walk through from Trevillian up to Gay Road. And then this is what is proposed to be the buffer to Trevillian, to the folks that live at Calarni Bay. Because one thing that was heard at the last public hearing was not wanting to look at a parking lot and look at cars. So what the applicant is proposing is a wall that would go along the frontage of Trevillian Avenue. There would be landscaping in front of that wall and there would be a new sidewalk as well as street trees. So coming out of Calarni Bay, you're going to look at landscaping. You're going to have a wall in front so you're not going to be able to see any of the cars that are in, in the parking lot. So your aesthetic image would be much better than before where you were looking at all the cars and there was a driveway as well to cut through the site. Um, in terms of code requirements, they are meeting our code with respect to parking. They actually have six extra parking places. They've done that just because in case they got a small medical tenant, let's say a four thousand square foot doctor wanted to move in there, needs a couple extra parking spaces. Uh, that's why they have retained those extra spaces. If the city wanted to increase the open space, increase the landscaping in the site, we certainly could require that they just meet the minimum code and not do the additional, uh, parking above and beyond code. Uh, as I mentioned, this is not the first time we've seen this property. We have seen it when it was the Lady Bird Academy, uh, that folks did not like for understandable reasons of the traffic generation. It was going to come to that site. We saw this again another year or so later when a different buyer wanted to rezone it all to R three. And there was pushbacks about the number of townhomes on the entire property. Basically, the commission said, come back when you have a real plan. Now we have a different buyer and a real, real plan. Um, it does meet our code, uh, in virtually every respect. There will be stormwater retention that is being done via underground exfiltration. We can talk about that in more detail. In terms of traffic generation, again, you have to understand that something's going to be built on this site. And so if it's the office and townhome scenario that's consistent with the existing zoning, that's going to produce about two-hundred-and-twenty-one trips, cars coming and going to the site. With this office project at the current size, it's about thirty more cars a day. So about one every forty-five minutes in addition to what the zoning would permit today. From the-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So it's about thirty more cars for what's proposed here per day. Then if they maxed out the current code, twenty-two townhouses, eight thousand square feet of office.
So two-twenty-one with code today.
Two-fifty-one where it is.
Commissioner Cooper, you need to press it.
If you're comparing net with gross, isn't it really sixty more trips a day?
If you assume that those three houses that are on the property, that there's no cars coming from them at all, then yeah, those are thirty more cars. But we always factor grandfather and the cars.
But I know we did that on half that equation. I don't think we did it on the other half of the equation. I, so I think we're really talking about sixty more cars. Help, help me with this. I'm not trying to be a problem here, but one of those numbers you used was a net new, two-hundred-and-fifty-one net new daily trips. And the other one was just the calculation of daily trips and it wasn't net new daily trips.
But the point still being that the difference in the traffic generation, whether it's thirty or sixty, spread over a ten, twelve-hour day, is not a significant number that people would really notice any difference because there were two or three more cars coming to, from the site, uh, in, in any given hour. Uh, from the staff's perspective and from the planning and zoning commission's perspective, and both of us have recommended approval, we're just thinking that an office building is a nicer neighbor to the adjacent folks that live at Chateau de Lac and Calarni Bay. Because an office tends to be Monday through Friday, nine to five, and when they are gone nights and weekends is when I'm home at Chateau de Lac or Calarni Bay. And if it's townhouses, the traffic will be all through night, weekend, et cetera. Uh, and those are the, the big differentials in terms of the time of usage. So you do have a positive recommendation. These are some significant changes that have been made and that's why they have returned from the previous public hearings because they feel they have addressed some of the comments that they heard at that meeting. So with that, see if you have any questions from the staff or return to the applicant.
Folks, uh, questions for staff before we have the applicant up? Mr. Seidel?
Yeah, um, Jeff, if I could be, in my mind, you know, I've, I've pushed in our ordinances to make sure that we provide connectivity to other side streets so that we have more of a grid formation within the city. And to me, um, I was just trying to understand, you know, why we wouldn't want to have a connection to the south, to Trevillian, that would allow cars that wanted to go south not to go on Gay Road and, and what the discussions were and how we got to the point. I'd like to fully understand that, if I could.
It's, it was discussions about the potential for the cut-throughs to use that route. We have cut-throughs coming down Executive to Gay Road. We have cut-throughs coming through Country Club Drive. Some of our own employees take it the opposite way through the Village and up through Country Club to get to their homes. That's why we know it's heavily used. And so now you've got another little route. You can take Trevillian up through this parking lot and jump on those cut-throughs. And, and Trevillian doesn't have a lot of traffic except for people coming to go to Calarni Bay. So that, that seemed significant, a protection for those folks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sprinkle?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cooper?
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver?
I thought the applicant was good.
Uh, there's these questions for staff. No, the applicant. Questions for staff?
Thank you.
Okay, great, Jeff, nothing for you. Oh, the applicant likes to pre- present.
Uh, Trey Vick, one thousand nine, Maitland Center Commons Boulevard, uh, suite two-oh-nine, Maitland, Florida, three-two-seven-five-one. Um, can we pull up the presentation that we have? Thanks. I appreciate you guys having us back up here. Um, you know, we tabled this discussion from May thirteenth meeting, um, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Uh, this was really an opportunity for us to go back and, uh- This was really an opportunity for us to go back and try to build consensus, try to address concerns, which there were many. I will speak for our entire team and say that there was a lot of effort put into that, both from communicating with neighbors as to what we're doing, making myself available as possible to meet, to discuss those changes, as well as directly communicating as much as possible with commission staff so you knew, and commission and staff, so everyone knew where we were going, what we were doing, and again, in an effort to build some consensus. So, so what we're going to do today is we'll walk through a little bit of our site history, which Jeff did a good job of summarizing. We'll cover a little more detail in that. We'll talk about the evolution of our project specifically with a little more, you know, visual reference so you can see how the site has evolved. We'll get into some comp plan language that exists in the comp plan today. As you know, part of our request is a comp plan amendment, and so we'll talk about how the comp plan is actually written today and how it ties in in concert with what we're asking for. And then I'm going to cover a section of general concerns that I've heard and that we've heard in public comment and that I know the residents have, and just so they know that there is, you know, an effort at play to cover those. I'm going to go through a little bit of the alternatives. I think Jeff referenced that. Commissioner Seidel, we do have some, some conceptual site plans to show what the alternative could look like. I want to be clear, you know, they're not fully engineered plans. I mean, that's an exercise that we wanted to go through to see what would massing look like, what would buildings look like. And so I do have that, and we will look at that together today. And then we'll just summarize our plan. So that's, that's what I'm going to take us through. I know everybody's time's valuable. I'm not trying to bury everybody in info, but this is important to us and it's important to the residents to take the time. So in summary, Lady Bird Academy was mentioned. This came to commission June 27th, 2016. This was to build, obviously, a daycare facility, about a 13,000 square foot building, so obviously smaller than ours. Generated substantially more traffic than, than our site with their traffic study that I read. I did not have a party to the traffic study, but it was 631 daily trips. Their analysis of our site of existing zoning said our site would generate 362 trips. Our traffic study came in less than that, which we'll talk about, so we don't use their trips, but I do just want to point that disparity out. Less FAR, less impervious, but I know there was a, I was not present in these meetings, but reading the minutes and understanding the backstory, substantial pushback from the residential neighborhoods, and the basics of, of the pushback was it's not suitable to the neighborhood, too much traffic and too much noise. The next was the residential project. This was a site plan that was submitted. This one shows 28 townhomes oriented on the site, street-side access and parking on both streets, which is how that plan was presented. That ended up not pursued, being pursued. There was actually commentary in the-
It just didn't come to us. I don't remember saying this.
It, it, I don't know, I wasn't in that meeting either, to be clear. I got that site plan from the package of the archive. So I, I didn't get it from any other source, but I did get it from the archive. So I don't know what was presented because I wasn't present, but I do want to say that. So this is what was used. It was to rezone the O2 pieces that are currently, where we're building our office building and convert that to R3. And there was actually commentary in the minutes that there was a concern that there was no office as a buffer to the residential. So, you know, again, that's, that was taken from archives. That's where I got that information. So now I'll talk about our site, which is why we're here today. You know, history is history, but, but where we're at today matters. So originally, our plan was a 32,000 square foot building. Again, we went through, this is, this is actually four concepts we started with, one of which pushed the building all the way back on Trevillion, another made a more linear building, and then two of them had this kind of similar concept in an effort to push our building closest to the O2 zone parcels. This site met, met code minimum landscape. It did not involve any of the sidewalk modifications that we're talking about today. It did have the multiple access points on Trevillion, which you can see, created a, you know, concern there was a raceway concept. And then we had open retention on site, which is what you see at the bottom. The next modification, and this is what was seen at the commission meeting on May 13th, we took the building size down from 32,000 to 29,000. We did go to an underground exfiltration system. We reoriented our access point away from the alignment to Gay Road to, to mitigate some of the perception that people will be running through there, and it broke it up a little bit, made it safer. We enhanced landscape areas along both Gay Road and Trevillion, and then we integrated, we had a vinyl fencing separation, not a masonry wall, but we met code with that. So then we find ourselves where we are today. You know, Jeff had shared some of the information. We further reduced our building size to 25,000 square feet, so we've ultimately reduced our building by 22% from where we started. We've actually gone to a singular access point. Commissioner Seidel, I hear your points on that, and that was a hotly contested item. You know, originally, we kept it for reasons that we felt were positive to the surrounding neighborhood, but that was not shared. And so in an effort to respond to that, this is what we've proposed. In addition, there was a concern, as Jeff mentioned, of looking at cars, looking at our building, and looking at the general streetscape and, and not wanting to see this in the residential neighborhood. So we've gone through and done a masonry-style wall that will be fully engineered, as well as screened with a robust landscaping that'll be called out, and all of which will be permitted and approved and have to meet code. And so that provides some buffering. We also will be constructing this same wall along our western boundary and then our eastern dogleg to the right to, to provide further screening. And then, you know, when we come into our stormwater portion, because I know that's another item that we're going to talk about, I'll let the man who deals with stormwater every day talk about that, so I don't pretend to be a stormwater engineer. But we do have a system called pave drains, which is approved by water management districts as a way to create a surface that can be parked on, driven on, but still create a quality system for drainage that is substantially improved over what the old-school impervious, impervious pavement was, which is notorious for failure. These are some of the examples with the integration of our pedestrian path. I think was another point that we talked about. Again, we lost the vehicular connectivity, but we added the pedestrian connectivity. There'll be discussion about parks today, too. It will create a park-like setting. We'll have it landscaped. We'll install live oak trees, which is a specimen, specimen preferred by the city of Winter Park from what we can read, as well as other landscaping items that would enhance the area. You'll see, this is a reference to the crepe murals, potocarpus hedge, and everything to draw some color onto that Trevillion Road point. And then that, this is a reference, don't hold me to color or design or style, please, but a reference of what the pave drain product looks like, just again, so you could see it. So these are the broad details. I really do want John to be able to get into more of the nuts and bolts behind some of the key concerns, which is the next section that we'll talk about, or comp plan language, and then key concerns.
Sounds good. Jonathan Martin with Kimling Horned Associates, 189 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1000, Orlando, Florida, 32801. So yeah, we were looking at the, all these changes that we were making, and some of the things that we thought was neat, especially in the May meeting when it said, "Hey, you know, we just recently changed our comp plan, and why wasn't this area looked at, or why wasn't it?" And it was interesting because we took that to heart, we downloaded the comp plan, we started reading through it, and there was really some interesting soundbites in here, specifically dealing with this area, that the Trevillion and Gay Road was mentioned and that actually that, you know, as long as we were doing the things that we did, you know, pedestrian connectivity, making sure that it's compatible, screening, things like that, it was actually strongly encouraged for comp plan and rezonings to occur to achieve those goals. So as you go through these items from the reduction FAR to the, you know, the square footage of, of, from 32 to 25 ultimately, and even the, the sidewalk and connectivity and thinking about Gay Road, it's interesting, when we meet in that area, sometimes we walk over to Brio or whatever, and it actually is a pretty nice corridor. So I think the eight-foot sidewalk along Gay, hopefully as things redevelop, there'll be a lot more opportunity for that to continue, like I think Bronson, Dale did a good job of saying, "No, we got to have a vision, and you got to implement it. It takes time." I also think the improvement of setting the building a little bit further back, you know, achieving that 20-foot average, I think was important also to be more in line with the existing buildings. So when you're driving down the street, that you actually got the feel that it feels there and it's consistent with both our east and west neighbors as you go around the corner. So all these changes, and I even think the masonry wall, I mean, when we talk about the trips and things and the cars and, you know, in, in, most of the time of the year, people get to the office around 7:30 or 8:00, so it's usually sunshine, but there are the winter months, and you have, will have headlights. So we do feel the wall, the masonry wall, does provide value for the adjacent neighbors that you're not going to have inadvertent light or headlights going across. But it was really interesting when we got into the comp plan. So as we continue, you know, different parts of the comp plan, as far as mobility and connection and providing bike racks, and also it, the, the landscaping as far as trying to provide true, true canopy trees along Gay and also along our, our western border and on Trevillion, that these will be walkable areas one day. And really, it will kind of create a little pocket park to cut between Gay and Trevillion when this is all said and done. So we really felt that all these things were kind of, if you can't have the vehicular connection, at least make it pedestrian. When we drive around, it's amazing how many of the residents that we see that we've talked to actually walking the corridor and walking around. So again, I think that everything we're proposing is, is consistent with the comp plan. You know, planning the right vegetation, working with your staff on picking the vegetation. We want it, we want a canopy. We want lush, we want it more of a, you know, nature kind of perspective to landscaping that's proposed, and we were happy to see how, how engaged staff will be in actually picking the landscaping with us so that, that as it matures, it'll be what the vision is for the city to, to get that more intimate perspective on landscaping. Pave drain, it's interesting. One of the things we heard about was the sea of asphalt, and it's very important that we look at the existing drain system. There's about four foot of fall across the site. We just got the geotech. The soils are really good. They're, they're appropriate for, and we, we've employed this product. Number one, you can get it in a lighter color, so it reduces the heat sink, it reduces the asphalt top, and it actually, it ends up being about the same area. So where we were proposing in the drawings that were submitted, where we were proposing the exfiltration system, that's where the pave drain area would go. But we could, we could scatter it about more on the project and make it look like an architectural pattern or something to break it, break it up, so it wouldn't need to all be at the bottom now. We could separate that, but that's something that I, I really want to point out is that we have to meet your LDC, land of code, and we have to meet St. John's code. So we always exceed those requirements, and the goal would be is that we make things better. It should be noted that nothing in the area is treated right now. Everything directly runs off. We will be one of the few projects that actually has a stormwater management system that'll treat the water before it discharges offsite. So I really think that that's another important component for the project. Again, talking about the pedestrian connectivity, because when we go back and look at the different opportunities there, we felt that, you know, the orientation of that, that how it makes sense to be on our western border, how screening it with a wall, I know that we'll have to work with the, the police chief with SEPTED concerns and stuff about safety for view corridors and things at the entrance to make sure that, you know, somebody isn't nefariously in the area, but we feel we can work through all that with them. So again, the connectivity, we feel this, this helps with that. So I did want to bring up the traffic item also as we get through the next slides, but we are talking about the 250, plus or minus a couple during the, during the week, but on the weekend, those numbers will be zero. So actually, when you look at the aggregate of the 221, Monday through Sunday, or the 250, Monday through Friday, this project on an aggregate weekly basis will generate less traffic by about 150. So there's actually less trip on a weekly basis than-
Less than what?
Less than the residential that would be proposed at, at full, at full buildout. So again, kind of wanted to recap that. So there were some other traffic studies that were done, but we took a more conservative approach with the numbers just because of that, in that we looked at the entrance. We're, we are really trying to work with the neighbors on Trevillion. We really feel that that's something, if the, if you all wish, we could add that back in, but we, we looked at some of the tenants that are interested and also the functionality, and we feel that, we feel we can make it work with just a Gay Road entrance, but, but that's open for discussion. Yes?
Can you expound just a little bit on the first, and, and the reason I ask this question is, when I saw the calculations, it said that for office plus the residential as it is currently zoned would generate the 221. It didn't say net new trips. It just said 221 trips. And that's the reason I had asked staff that question.
Understood.
And I just want to make absolutely sure that I'm not misunderstanding that is the number 30 or is the number 60, the delta between the same calculations for the existing zoning and the calculations for this project?
Understood. So for number one, what it compares is what the 22 proposed units and the 8,000 square feet added. If you take the 30 existing, being the three single-family residential units, it just, the math still works out that it's 251, so it's 220 new for the project, but something is going to happen. So we compare max density to, to a comparable. It's really from what's, what could be proposed or what has been proposed in the past, it's, it's comparable.
Okay.
Very good. And then Trey? Again, wanting to go back to stormwater management. So we went and looked at the area. There is some construction in the area and there's some inlet, so I heard that there was a stormwater concern as far as maybe somebody had a concern about what was happening. I think with the introduction of the pave drain system or, or an alternate of equal, of equal kind, and the fact that we will meet, work with the city staff to meet or exceed your code plus the St. John's code, we would improve on the situation that's out there. It will be better when we're done than it is now. So we heard that concern. It's something that we'll continue to work with staff, and we haven't designed, we've done the geotech, we've started to look at sizing and things like that. Everything's coming back very favorable that the system can be employed, but obviously we have work to do with staff from a technical perspective.
Just a couple other general concerns that I've heard from residents. One was safety. This was predominantly tabled from the Chateau de Lac residents, and it was relating to the pedestrian connectivity that we're proposing. And that's, that's a fair concern. I think anytime you have open spaces, parks, things of that nature, sometimes that can attract an element that you're not intending to attract, especially if you have large spaces that are going to be unlit at night or heavily treed, it's, it's areas that can cause problems. So safety was a fair concern to be brought up there. And so the way we looked at it, I want to be clear, we'll have a, a well-lit parking lot. It's code required, so we'll meet the candlefoot power that's all required by the city. We'll also orient our lighting to where it lights that path. Again, have not done pure photometrics on this yet, so I don't want to say exactly what it's going to be, but we'll be mindful of the residents at Chateau de Lac so that we're not flooding their resident units with light. I mean, that's something I think we've demonstrated an ability to be thoughtful, so that's a piece of it, and it will be lit. And so I just think that the other piece to that is, and I'll show pictures in a minute, but as you talk about safety, you've got three homes that are on that site now. One that's in complete disrepair and a blue tarp roof, two that had previous occupants, but there was substantial repairs that were needed to be made, and, and ultimately, the, the cost to repair those homes was not relevant to the value of them, and so that hasn't happened. So in my experience, abandoned homes are not a safe scenario for a city. We're trying to expedite this process and take those abandoned homes and turn them into a functional producing asset for not only the city, but also for the neighborhood. I do think that you've seen our elevations and our renderings, they're attractive. And I think the pedestrian connectivity actually creates a little bit of activity, has people moving back and forth. I think where there's activity, there's less crime. Having an active dynamic office next to it as well helps. So the next is a parking lot. I understand no one wants to look at parking. You know, that's a common theme. You hear it, we're retail developers as well, parking, you know, you want as much parking as you can get at all times because it helps retailers. But we've taken the, the steps here, as, as John's described, I've described, I don't need to belabor the point, but building walls, landscaping, taking the efforts in place to, to mitigate the parking as much as possible. I also think integrating some of this pave drain concept breaks up that asphalt to make it less than a sea of blacktop. So that is, again, yet another thing that we'll be able to do. And then I guess one last general concern I want to bring up, and it's come up, I've had personal conversations with two different residents about this. It's the location of the building as well as the location of our dumpster. The dumpster is located in the southeast corner of the site, which is adjacent to an O2 parcel, but it is a person's home, right? So being mindful of that, I'm sure that'll come up tonight as well. We have looked at that. We've looked at the design, and we have found that we can move that dumpster from the southeast corner to the southwest corner, or in the south of the site somewhere along a drive aisle that's, it has to be accessible to garbage trucks, obviously. But we do believe we can make that change based on site planning analysis we've done today, so I haven't laid it out. But, but in talking through that, I do think we can make that accommodation, and it's totally understandable with noise and, and effort, so that, that is something we can address. The last one I'll bring up is building location, and it's like every action has its equal reaction. So I think if we go moving this building, where you'll see our western setbacks are substantial because we're pushing away from the residential, and you'll see our southern setbacks are substantial on the Trevillion roadside because we're staying away from residential. I think if we reoriented that building, which, mind you, we would be open to, we could put the back of the building on Trevillion- put the back of the building on Trevillion, I think we'd have more challenges than we would have benefit. The building complaint has generally been our adjacent office tenant, actually where my wife's office is now, didn't like the 10-foot setback. By code, we could do 5-foot, but we actually did 10. But I did just want to mention that, that that's something that has been evaluated. And then obviously, there's a setback conversation to be had with our neighbor to the south, the O2-zoned lot, but is a woman's home. And so, you know, there is some, I think, flexibility there, in that one of the comments we had gotten prior was moving that further off of Gay Road. We moved it 10-foot back, so the code is 30 feet, we're now at 16. If we moved back up to Gay Road, we could pick that up. And that's a good example of this, for every action, there's an equal reaction. You know, that was a response to a comment that we did, because it doesn't impact our building at all. It really just impacts the people around us, so we're willing to take those changes. But when we do that, to make one person happy, we end up impairing another. And so, you know, I think you could go through that circular argument for years, and we have, to some extent, since 2016 when this came through. This is what was talked about earlier. This is alternative massing of sites based on the 22 residential units, 8,000 square feet of office. It's very conceptual, again, I just want to be clear, in this scenario, we've done our best to show what the layout could look like. I mean, we can talk through it, but that's a general idea of one singular building, and then a singular office, or three multiple buildings and a singular office.
Trey, just a quick question on your initial layouts.
Yes.
Sorry. Did they actually, did you count the parking spaces and you meet parking on those?
Can you move that slide back?
Go back one row. Thank you.
So maybe you guys want to cover this. I will say that I know that there's parking for code minimum on office, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, no, we looked at, we started going through the code, but it was going to be a pretty large endeavor to go through the entire thing. And these were done really just to kind of show massing. So we felt it was very close to the parking code, the office was 100% good, and then the residential, it all depends on, there were just some things with the plan that we need to be worked out with staff. So again, we did not go through everything with the entire code, because we just wanted to kind of give those a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. So then I just wanted to provide, I mean, I'm sure all the commissioners have seen the area, and I just wanted, there was some question about tree health along Gay Road, and so this is from this morning, beautiful day, actually, just hot. And so this is the tree line along Gay Road, the picture on the left, and the picture on the right is actually along Trevillion looking back towards the site. The existing buildings, these are the conditions, the top-left picture is the blue tarp roof building that you see from Gay Road going counterclockwise. That building is a close-up of that other building. And then the building, kind of again, continuing to go counterclockwise on the right side, that is what you see, the condos in the back are Kalarni Bay. So again, I'm just trying to provide an example of what we have there, too. So now, again, existing neighborhoods, so the picture to the left is the backside of Kalarni Bay where Trevillion dead ends, that's where their dumpsters are, and then there's a wall as it goes into Chateau de Lac. And then I included the picture of, to the right, which is Plymouth Landing, the senior housing community, just to give you an idea of scope and size and massing of that building, which, mind you, this building is, you know, you have our site, you have Chateau de Lac, which is two-story multifamily, and then you go back further and you have this five-story multifamily senior housing community there. So again, this pushes us pretty much back to Country Club Drive, just to give some, or Executive Drive, excuse me, an idea of what the neighborhood and compatibility is.
Back into the slide, too. One of the things that we heard, too, about on this picture was, you know, with the dumpster, you know, it's an office building, you know, once in a while, maybe twice a week, once a week, it will get picked up. And one of the concerns was, well, what's the noise like and everything? But I just wanted to point out on the left picture that a lot of the Kalarni Bay dumpsters are just kind of out randomly, and there's a lot of dumpsters over there, so it's within, you know, earshot of our project. So you'll have a lot more of that truck activity picking up and dumping over there than in the area already than what our project would be doing.
Again, just, again, this is a view looking back down Gay Road. That building you see on the left picture on the right side is the Plymouth Landing apartment building. And then you can't really see on this picture, but you can see it through here. Then you can see through the trees there and you see Chateau de Lac. And then this picture to the right, that's looking down Executive Drive towards the Ravage Development, which is the largest building you see at the end of Executive Drive. Again, I just want to make sure we all have a good grasp of the neighborhood and what is here. And then existing conditions of what we have, so top-left, that's the back end of the Michael's Shopping Center, so that is the view off of Gay Road right now. And then what you have, the other two pictures, I wanted to show what the fence condition is now compared to the masonry wall we'll be providing. We won't touch their fence if they'd like to keep it, it's obviously on their property. The other thing that I noted today that I had not noticed prior, the picture on the far right, that's actually me just standing on level ground, taking a picture at chest level. You see over that fence because there's a bit of a swale there. So I don't want to misspeak, but as you build our wall on top of that elevated platform, I think you have even greater screening from the residential units to our commercial development than you would have from a traditional fence built on their property. So it was just another point, I had not really noticed that until I walked it today again. And then, again, not to belabor it, but I just want to make sure everyone sees. So this is actually the same vantage point. Granted, the one on the right is a beautiful rendering done by our friends at Cachian Peterson, don't get me wrong on that, but it is the same view. And it is the same materials that will be used. And so I just wanted to draw that correlation between what you have today and where we're going. And then same, along Gay Road, the pictures, the three on the left are the ones you had seen previously. And then on the right is what we're proposing. So just trying to get a feel for the aesthetic change.
Kind of get this, Trey, how close are you?
This is my last slide.
Okay, thank you.
[laughter]
Yes, it is.
So anyways, I don't need to repeat it. This is what the plan is, it's extremely well-thought-out. I've spent a lot of time talking with residents that are willing to talk, as well as y'all, as commissioners that are willing to talk. And so I think I should probably just shut up now and then let everyone else talk, and we'll go from there. How about that?
Fine, thank you very much. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Seidel, anything? Ms. Sprinkle? Ms. Cooper? No? Mr. Weaver?
No.
Okay, great. Well, we're going to have a little discussion, we'll open up Florida Public Committee, and you all are going to be welcome back to address any concerns that come out of either one of those conversations, okay? Thanks, guys. So, discussion. Mr. Weaver?
Oh, go ahead, John.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I have some comments, and I promise I won't take that long.
Okay.
So two of these lots are zoned R3, and I realize it would be a tough fight for the city to prevent a condo or townhouse development. However, the applicant is asking for zoning and comp plant, entitlements here. Entitlements should be a mutually beneficial arrangement, benefiting the city, its residents, as well as the developer. But this area is problematic for development at this time. And I'm going to talk about a similar area in the city and get back to the Gay Road area in a couple of minutes because of their similarities. So I wanted to say I'm always impressed with our public works team and the projects that they can do, especially in-house. This team is constantly working on stormwater projects all over the city to alleviate flooding, but they are limited in manpower and funding. As I understand it, we're about a million and a half short, is that about right?
May I add short of what?
To cover the projects that we have on schedule.
Sure.
Okay. So anyway, a couple of dozen stormwater projects are planned over the next few years costing millions. Russ, go ahead with the first slide. So this is an intersection at King's Way and Fawcett where a rushing stream comes down a hill when it rains. And if you look over at the wall, that's the height that the water gets. So there are also those electrical boxes for our undergrounded connections, they go underwater as well. Next slide, please. So this has eroded the brick streets and undercut a retaining wall, that same wall that I just mentioned. The silt from the erosion ultimately finds its way untreated into Lake Sioux. This is also part of the reason some of our brick streets are bumpy.
Next slide.
Next slide, please. So because of funding and scheduling, the Fawcett Road project will take five years to complete at a cost of three-quarters of a million dollars. So we often hear that the city hasn't raised our property tax mileage for 11 years, and city staff levels hasn't increased significantly during that time either. I'm not advocating here for increases to either or the stormwater fund, I only point these out because these are the big reasons why stormwater projects can't be sped up to any degree. As a city, we have to allow these remediation projects to proceed before adding to the problem. Now, the stormwater basin for much of this area across the street, across 1792, is Lake Medson, and its capacity is maxed out. And instead, we're using Lake Kalarni as a stormwater receptacle due to development from the 60s and 70s that doesn't have, wasn't done under the current rules. Both of these lakes have drain wells that dump excess stormwater down into the Floridian aquifer, which was a 1960s vintage stopgap measure. These drain wells come with their problems, they require maintenance and usually at the worst possible times, like during heavy storms. That water with its excess nutrients finds its way into our springs and others' drinking water supplies. This practice is not good for future generations. The rules are different now, where new development must retain two inches of rainwater, but we have storms dozens of times per year that now exceed two inches. Once the ground is saturated, the excess runs downhill. Next slide, please. So I appreciate the applicant has lowered the far on this office building to 31%, but the impervious area covers most of the lots. I also appreciate the applicants working with staff and residents. Next slide. So this is a topographical map showing the two residential lots, and you can see, those of you that are familiar with topo maps, that these lots reside at the highest point in the area. So any runoff goes downhill in all directions, mostly towards Kalarni Bay and Chateau du Lac. So that happens now to a lesser degree because the flow is not channeled by curbs, but the impervious parking lot covering an acre will drastically increase the erosion and flooding for the neighbors due to channeling. Next slide, please. So this makes it a little clearer, and closer the lines are together, the steeper the slope, and you can see from earlier slides what a little bit of a hill does for stormwater. Right now, there are no curbs or stormwater inlets on Gay Road or Trevillion. Next slide, please. These amenities are necessary improvements the city must take care of before adding development that increases impervious area. As we saw last week, when we experienced daily summer rain events, the ground becomes saturated and onsite exfiltration no longer works. The Deschondy Development called Kalarni Shores just down the street addressed these issues by adding a stormwater pond on one lot, recurbing the entire street with stormwater inlets, removing some 30 septic tanks, and bringing the city sewer, not only for his development, but the surrounding neighbors. But as we saw last week, that stormwater system was overwhelmed over several days and all the streets were flooded. And a lot of that water comes from this area where we're talking about developing. I don't believe it's reasonable to ask this applicant to do all those things as the proposed project is much smaller. These are improvements the city must undertake. Next slide, please. And I realize that the adjacent neighbors already have stormwater issues, but I don't believe it's fair to exacerbate those issues by granting these entitlements to the office project. There's no hardship for the applicant when comparing those of surrounding property owners. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Weaver, what do you propose after that?
Well, I'm not inclined to vote to go ahead with this development because the streets can't handle it. There's no stormwater system at all in these areas.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry, we just don't allow clapping for either side in here. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
No, I am very curious from staff as to what is the resolution? If this is not specifically the responsibility of the applicant, then it becomes the responsibility of the city. And if it's the responsibility of the city, no doubt, our guys are pretty organized and they have good project plans, so I know you've given it a lot of thought. So the question becomes, in the absence of it being one particular developer's responsibility, what is the plan for dealing with it? And is there an impact fee that addresses this? And if there is not, should there be?
So guys, hang on a second. Let's stay focused on this project. I don't want to get caught up on, if there are issues that the city needs to take care of in that neighborhood, I understand there's issues with flooding during some major downpours in the Kalarni Bay, the condos over there. I understand that. But I really want to kind of stay focused on the project before us. This will meet code, or it will not be, it should not be in front of us. So rather than talk about city stormwater issues, it's really kind of, we need to stay focused on this item, not what the city is or is not doing along any of those parcels.
That's very fair, Mr. Mayor. Of course, on the other hand, the project may get denied because we don't understand the answer. So if there's an answer there, it would probably behoove us to understand it, but if not, I understand. Thank you.
And that's fair, Commissioner, thank you for saying that. I would say that, to this, right now, there is no stormwater treatment on that property, is that correct?
Correct.
And with this redevelopment of this property as proposed, there will be a stormwater treatment, correct?
Correct.
So we can assume that anything that they're going to be doing is better than what's currently there, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Is it also fair to assume that anything that they do will not conflict or interfere with your regional solution? You know, because I know you're going to do something, I've seen your list, and I know how many years it takes. So the question is, if they do on their individual lot what they're planning to do, I suppose we already have a stormwater plan that's been approved for this project?
We haven't been over the details of the design completely, but it is required that they pre-post the rate of runoff from their development.
Okay, okay, so it has to be no more than it was when they started, and we have statistics to prove what it is now? And you'll evaluate what it is post? Is that how that works?
We'll evaluate their calculations, yes.
Okay. But you don't actually go out and verify after the project's built?
We'll verify before and after.
Oh, good.
I was out there today.
Okay, and there's nothing that they're doing that's going to interfere, or they don't need to tie into a master plan that you already have?
We...
Yes, thank you, I would love, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Seidel, because you understand what I'm trying to ask.
So I'm going to make one comment before that, and that is, right now, there is no requirement, given the age of this property and given where it stands, that it handle its own water retention. The new, the code, the way it exists today, any change there, they will be responsible for handling all of their own retention, which, again, does not currently exist. Mr. Seidel?
Yeah, Don, I had a little more simple question. The downstream properties, like we got some pictures of some water flowing through the ditches, and we've seen the car parks, do we have structural damage from flooding reported in any of the downstream properties today?
The only record that I have off of Trevillion was, it was about 15 years ago, I haven't been there since, there was runoff that was going directly west underneath the fence, and I worked with Chateau de Lac because they had some areas that were too high and it was trapping, their sod was actually keeping it in their parking lots, so they cut down their sod a little bit and allowed it into some shallow swales. I have never got a call from, what is it, Kalarni Bay? Never, I've never been over there, I've seen the pictures, and I actually, we pulled up a copy of the original plan from 19, I think it was 85, I got home glasses with me, but there's retention all around every building on Kalarni Bay, so they're, you know, they're going to be holding water around their buildings, that's the way it was designed. And there's some drains from their parking lot that go to those retention areas as well.
Okay, and so to answer your question, okay, if there's not existing properties flooding today, when the engineer comes along and they do their design, if they flood after he's done, then you know who to point the finger at. And that's kind of how the system works, they'll put together, evaluate... They'll put together a valuation in their couch, will be signed by an engineer, but it's, no one's going to guarantee the work until, you know, they go through and build it. And then if it floods after the fact, we just heard right now, it doesn't flood. And so, most engineers don't like to be pulled into court, so they design accordingly and make sure that they don't flood the downstream properties. So that, that kind of answers that, that, now that regional question, if there's no existing flooding that's causing property damage, I don't know that we would spend the time figuring out any kind of mitigation for just when the sidewalks get wet or the street gets wet.
We don't have a project identified in that area.
And so kind of, to follow up on that, the flooding that we've seen on Kalani Bay, is any of that water from outside of their property? I mean, my understanding is it's all internal-
As far as I could tell today, now, it wasn't raining when it was out there, but there is a hump in the driveway. It looks like it can, it can block any water from Trevillion from going over there, but I'd have to check-
Unless, so, so under normal conditions? I mean, any of these, when we have these massive three inches in 15 minutes, all bets are off.
Right. And I believe what, what we saw on those photos may have been just internal, you know, water, but I'm not, I wasn't there-
Sure, you weren't there. That's fair. That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, that's why I asked about property flooding, because we've been getting those storms, and if there's no reported property damage from storms-
I just wanted to be very specific to that property since we all received photos about that property. Okay, discussion. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, so, Don, I have to disagree just a little bit here. So the residents asked for the wall along Trevillion, and right now, you have this very open drainage that goes across Trevillion because there's no curbs there. And putting up that wall channels it to the southwest corner. So I'm, I'm saying, once you go over what the property, or what the design is supposed to hold in inches, now you've got a channel shooting right out that driveway. Same way with the outlet on Gay. There's no curbs out there, there's no stormwater inlets, and it just floods the street. So the channeling is significant here, because you don't have that right now. It's just a big grassy field.
I haven't, we haven't been through the design entirely, but actually, all I've seen was a concept drainage design. But keep in mind, the rate that leaves that site has to match the rate that it is today.
But it's not channeled, that's my point. The curbs channel it.
If, if there's a channel, then they're going to have to figure out how to make the rate match.
Is it safe to say that it'll meet code? It'll meet code. We haven't even, you haven't seen the plans, we haven't seen the plans. But in order this, for this to take that step, I think we're just, we're kind of talking about channeling. And I appreciate Mr. Weaver's perspective on it, but I also think that we haven't seen the final stormwater retention plan, so it's kind of, we're all speaking a bit out of turn on this.
We haven't seen it, the drainage plan or the calculations, that's, that's going to tell us everything.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper?
No, it's all right. Jeff, my question is, when we approve projects, sometime we have preliminary approvals and things have to come back to us for final approval. If, if I had my code open in front of me, would it say that the stormwater plan is part of a preliminary approval or a final approval? Or is it after the fact?
So you could, as we did in the case of the Mayflower, require that the stormwater drainage plan come back to the commission for your review and approval, after we've had it vetted by staff, after it's been vetted by St. John's. If you wanted to do that-
No, I understand. But, but, and, and I don't think we would want to do that.
Otherwise not.
Just the stormwater plan, because even though we may have the expertise up here, it's probably much better worked in a, in a workroom. But my question to you is, can we give a preliminary approval contingent upon the approval by staff of the stormwater plan? I mean, does that happen?
Sure, but when they come back from final, you'll say, why did they qualify for the final? And we'll have to, we would explain how this drainage system works and blah, 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 blah.
We won't get a second reading unless staff approves their stormwater retention plan. It just, just doesn't make it to us.
That's true.
No, but we will approve it now, and then we'll-
First reading.
-approve it in two weeks. And there-
Not in two weeks.
Will, whatever. Will there be a stormwater plan approved before our second vote?
They've provided everything that the staff requires today for preliminary and final approval. However, if you are not satisfied, that you're not knowledgeable enough about the drainage, the calculations, how it works, blah, 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 if you want to see it in more detail, then you can do, impose a condition that they come back for final.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what second readings were.
Well, if it's, if it's ready in two weeks-
Right, second reading is before it's ready.
Yeah, but staff won't, I hear what you're saying. Commissioner Seidel.
Another question for Mr. Mark Cott real quick, please. Don, the Kmart Plaza, they put a large exfiltration system in there, right? Did that used to outfall this way, or did that outfall to a different location?
It has an outfall. It goes towards Executive Drive and then down a-
But it, it doesn't come south, it goes west?
It goes west and south to the Lake Kalani. The outfall, after, after the-
Okay, but not through this area, it goes through the other area?
Right, no, not through this area.
Okay, so, I guess what I'm asking then, did you get a net improvement after that project was put in? Because that really was existing pavement, and we just put the system there, right?
Did, what was the question?
Was there a net improvement that you could actually physically?
Definitely.
Okay.
There was no treatment at all on that site before. And it's the same amount of area.
From a flooding perspective?
I didn't really have any flooding in that area, so I can't comment on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, any comments? Commissioner?
Okay, so I'm having a hard time here because we asked Mr. Vic to go back and talk to people and come back with some sisses and to come back with another plan, and he's done that, okay? When he came back with the other plan, he made his building smaller. We're really looking at making a decision today on whether or not we're going to permit what he's brought today, or we're going to go ahead and say, build your 28 or 22 condos and your 8,000 square foot building. That's what we're really saying today. Something is going to get built there, and we need to know that, and we need to, to, to work accordingly. I feel badly that we've had people working and working and working on this, and still we can't seem to satisfy the community. And I, I want to satisfy the community, I really do, because I think that's a great place to live back there. It seems so pleasant, so nice. And it seems like what they're bringing to us will enhance that. So I'm having a hard time because I'd like to satisfy the community, just like everybody up here would like to do, but, but we're not going to not see something built there. And that's what I keep hearing is, just leave it alone. It's not going to be left alone. So we have to make some decisions because this is what we've got in front of us.
Well, I appreciate that. My point was that the city needs to do something in advance of developing this. The, these streets are just not drained, they don't have curbs, there's no stormwater inlets. The water has to go downhill, and it's going to somebody's property.
Again, I think, with all due respect, I've heard, we've heard from other engineers that the water on this site will be treated on site. There will be, and if we do have work to do out there, then, then that's in the plans and we need, and that's underway. But there's no treatment currently. And I feel, and it was answered by staff, that almost any work done on property, given current code, is going to be better than what's currently out there. So if there is street flooding, and if there's those other issues, I, I don't, I don't believe that this is going to worsen that whatsoever, given the advice of the professionals that have talked about this. And, and no disrespect, Mr. Weaver.
None taken.
Okay.
I would like to hear from the residents before I comment on this one.
I'd like to have a motion before we have the residents, because if this does not move, then there's no, then I don't think the residents will, will be stepping forward. So the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move it for discussion, mainly.
And I'll second it for discussion.
Great. Now, let's open up Florida public for comment on this. Ladies, please. Gentlemen, too. I just saw the ladies raise their hand. That's, so if you all wouldn't mind filling out a little yellow, the yellow paper and step forward, that would be great. If you just say your name and your address for the record, that would be appreciated.
Sure. My name is Ken Posick with Keller Williams. My office address is 6900 Turkey Lake Road, Orlando, Florida, 32819. I represent the owner of the property. She was here at the last meeting, but was unable to make it to this meeting, so she sent a letter in advance for me to read, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right, awesome. So my name's Kathleen, Kathleen Bond. My aunt owned the property on Gay Road for over 50 years. As a child, I remember seeing the view of Lake Kalani from her home and there being almost no traffic up and down Orlando Ave. I used to ride my pony from the front yard all the way down to the lake, and we used to be able to visit all the neighbors across the streets before the condos replaced the individual homes that made up that neighborhood. But things changed. Condos went up and blocked the view of the lake, and commercial development brought life to Winter Garden, or to Winter Park, I'm sorry. My aunt would say, well, that's progress, and that's a good thing for everybody in the area. When my aunt passed away, she willed the property to me, and I've had significant interest in the property. Everyone from three to four-story industrial buildings, commercial retail, and more. All of the offers ended up going nowhere due to the strict height and use guidelines of Winter Park. It's been a really tough go. Over the past year, my agent and I have worked with Trey Vic and his company to come up with a beautiful redevelopment of my aunt's property. The rendering, the renderings show a beautiful transformation of the lots and, in my opinion, are consistent with the high-end feel that Winter Park is known for. My hope is that the council will see the great opportunity to improve this area that's in front of you. Thank you for your time and consideration. Kathy Bond.
Great. Thank you so much.
If you don't mind, I have just 30 seconds of-
Certainly, please. You still have a minute and a half.
Awesome. So having listed the property over the past 20 months, we opened it up for letters of intent. We had 11 letters of intent within 30 days that we had it open. And we went, contacted staff and said, hey, which one of these fit the best for what we can do here? And really, what Trey has proposed here, especially with the, the final version, has seemed to really be the best fit based on all of the interests that we had in front of us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Please.
Thank you. My name is Adrienne Altamari. I live in the Chateau de Lac condominium community at 1500 Gay Road, which is adjacent to the V3 Capital project on the western boundary. I'm also our community's neighborhood watch representative, and I serve on the neighborhood advisory council to the Winter Park Police Department. While our community has long hoped for residential neighbors next door, and others in our community have hoped for the property to become a park, I have come to terms with accepting the current project with one exception. Our community has been beset with criminal incidents, primarily on our western border, the parking lot and the cars there, and some other incidents, reported and unreported, in addition to the fact that we have trespassers on a near daily basis. While our great Winter Park police force has responded quickly and successfully, I feel that the pedestrian bike path, this is my concern, on the western boundary of the project, in spite of being lit and with a masonry wall running along our existing fence, will introduce transients and, to our previously hidden gem, as we have been called, and possibly increase our vulnerability to trespass and/or crime. It will call, call attention to our lakefront, with some people assuming incorrectly that they can access Lake Kalani through our private property. I would like to see the pedestrian bike path eliminated from the project. And it also is for those reasons that I felt a park was unsafe, because I think we'd have people sleeping, hiding in there. If a pedestrian bike path is deemed necessary by the city commission, then I would request that it be constructed on the eastern boundary, which is the commercial side. Trey Vic of V3 Capital has been very willing to meet with us and communicate with us and our residents, and I think that ultimately, they will be a good neighbor. I hope you'll take our concerns under consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Altamari.
Thank you.
We're going to need some help just bringing up some photos here. If someone could assist us with this.
Sure, you have them for the-
For Kalani Bay.
Okay, so there, if you just place them on the-
Okay.
The Elmo, there you go.
Place up. Ah, can you see it?
Pretty good, first shot.
I'm so surprised.
Listen, it's, Tate's staff still has no idea how to do that, so you guys are way ahead of them.
I hate this, I'm sorry.
No, this, I substitute teach, and this is a lot easier than the ones in schools, believe me. They're more complicated.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Nancy Ponte, and I live at 570 Kalani Bay Court in Winter Park. And I have two points I'd like to make, aside from the fact that when I moved in here, this was such a lovely, nice little, little neighborhood niche. It was, it was residential and it was cozy, and now it's just being completely overrun with commercial things, which I'm not terribly in fond of. I wanted to point out, I did send you guys these three pictures the other day. I took them on my phone, when I pulled into the parking lot at Kalani Bay and drove down to my parking space, which took 30 seconds, maybe, I reached and got my umbrella, I put my purse on, I opened the door, and this, well, let me show you this one. This is the one that Mr. Weaver showed a moment ago. It was already that deep, four inches maybe, in my, in my carport. And the other one that, that I just showed is the parking lot. It, I don't, I can't call it a hill. It's not a hill coming down from, from Trevillion, but it's a grade that comes decidedly down toward the lake. And that comes down, and you can barely see it, but there's just a little bubble right there. I missed it when I took the picture, but it had been bubbling way up because it was belching back water, because it so overflows. And this is with, with less than five minutes of rain. And then, from my, from my condo-
Yes, there's a drain.
Yeah, there is a drain there. And it, and it goes into this next picture, which, I took it from my bedroom window, and there's a screen on the window, so it gets messed up with water. But you can see the water drainage going down that swale, and it goes down and turns to the right, and it literally becomes a lake. And before you get to the lake, it's in our front yard of the number six building. And that's with, that's every time it rains, with hardly any rain at all. Now, I know, Mr. Mayor, you say that you think anything would have to be better, but right now, all those four lots are soil. They have to absorb a lot of the water. I counted the number of parking spaces. There's 105 shown, drawn here. And if that's all pavement, that's got to be runoff, that, that's not sinking into the ground. I don't know, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know what they're going to do with that. But there's nothing showing on their plan that shows like a, a retention pond or any kind of area where you're going to get some storage for water. So I'm, I'm, I'm having time, I'm sorry, I guess my time's up.
That's okay.
But, but you can see my, my concern. And, and one last quick thing?
Sure.
I know there's going to be a lot of traffic. They're saying only so many, 200 car, whatever. Some of those are going to, I'm sure, come out and not want to wait for the light on Gay Road. So the only other place now, they're going to come behind the ABC store. That's got a blind turn in it already. And we use that because that's our only way to go north. If, you know, we really take our chances by going north from Trevillion.
Great.
So we use it. People are now going to be coming the other way to get out. So just, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Thank you, Ms. Ponte. Appreciate it.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
They said about flooding issues, I want to let you know, I was on the board for the past three years. Building six, three units were being flooded. We just spent $20,000 on a flood issue in building six. We also have flooding issues in building three and four as well. I have called for, I would like to see a comprehensive engineering report done before this building goes up, because there are significant building issues, flooding issues at Kalani Bay. We've only solved one building right now. We've got two others. And it floods so bad in the back, you've got snakes in there and all kinds of stuff. So there is definitely flooding back there.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
And I don't know why they didn't have a record of about $20,000 being spent or, because we had inquired with the city. Also, on the history, I said this before about the owner, she has a right to sell her property. before about the owner, she has a right to sell her property. Janice and Margene have spoken to her numerous times, saying, "You know, if you sell it as one parcel, it's gonna be a lot more difficult to get through than if you sell it as two parcels." She has not been willing to compromise. We didn't want the original, was that Child Care Academy go through? The second proposal, we were willing to let go through, I think it was twenty-eight units. The builder, the developer came back and said, "We propose sixteen to twenty." He wasn't willing to compromise. This project has pluses and minuses. Some people want to see a two-story condo, because they think that's gonna fit in much better than a building, and see their neighborhood get destroyed. We do have a wall. Some people are not liking the wall. So I think on both sides, you've got pluses and minuses. From what I hear from most of these people, they'd rather see a residential, two-story, high-end condos or townhouses go in, even though there's gonna be more traffic, because they think it's gonna, their property values will be better than if you put a big building with a big wall up. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Altamari.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Doug White. I live at five ninety-five Lakefront Boulevard. I just, I didn't want to flog a dead horse here, but following the presentation of these professionals here, it almost sounds like this is a done deal. However, aside from the stormwater and drainage issues, my concern will be the traffic. And I know that it's five days a week that we've been told that there will be traffic coming and going from the office project there. However, when the people leave work at five o'clock, they're gonna go one of two ways coming out that one access point to Gay Road. The developers have appeased Colarney Bay by blocking off and putting a wall there and not putting a cut-through there. That's leaving one way in and one way out on the Gay Road. Those folks leaving at five o'clock, they're gonna go, if they need to go to I-4 or points west, they're gonna cut through Country Club Lane. You think that's gonna make the people that are gonna be buying these eight hundred thousand dollar-plus homes have a backup there at Gay Road, and, I mean, at Country Club and Lee Road? For them to turn left is hard enough now without two hundred-plus cars a day, okay? And try to get right-hand on Gay Road coming out of that parking lot now, even today, without a building there. I'm just opposed to the project in its present state of a large office building with a lot of cars there, okay? It sounds like something is gonna be built there. It sounds like that. It probably is. Whatever happened to the park project? We have no parks on the west side of Winter Park. Since it's been annexed, it's probably been, what, twelve, fifteen years ago, that whole area was annexed in, okay? There's no park whatsoever on that side. With the residents, and I consider myself the block captain from the residents of Lakefront Boulevard and Country Club, just a minute, and-
No, you have your time.
And the new residents that are coming in, thirty-one single-family homes are being built as we speak. Those folks are not gonna want that traffic backed up in front of their house, which is gonna occur at Gay Road at five o'clock and Lee Road. It's just gonna happen. There's no way around it unless they put a traffic light up there. Hey, lo and behold, let's put a traffic light up there. No, that's not gonna work either. So I think the park is the way to go. It's gonna benefit the seniors at the Plymouth. It's gonna benefit the neighborhood back there that doesn't have a park on the west side of Winter Park that was annexed in years ago. It's time to do something about that, okay? With all due respect to you guys, I know y'all have a job to do too, but we live back there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White. We appreciate it. Okay, folks-
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments, just-
Can we wait, we're gonna wait till there's, Mr. Seidel had some comments too. Yeah, as soon as the folks are done speaking, please, we'll have the opportunity. Mr. Goddett, if you'd like to line up, if there's anybody else, if you would mind lining up to speak, so I can just try to have an understanding of how long it'll take.
My name is Odaiya Sandy Canfield. I'm his neighbor, five eighty-five Lakefront Boulevard. I have to concur with everything he said. The traffic on Country Club Road is abominable already. The traffic on Gay Road is abominable already, because we have such stopgaps on Seventy-Ninety-two and Lee Road. So it used to take me three minutes to get from my house to my office on Park Avenue. I can't even tell you how long it takes now. Sometimes I want to turn left to go to I-4, and I will sit at Country Club Road forever. The traffic congestion is abominable, and I thought that I was buying a little piece of heaven, a little quiet neighborhood, but this cut-through from Gay Road to Country Club is constant. I'm very concerned about the traffic that's gonna be increased by this building. So that's my concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rose Marie Seaman. I live at one oh five Madrid and Castleberry, but I own property on Lee Road. I'm a business partner of Sandy Canfield, so I spend a lot of time in her neighborhood. And I am exactly less than a quarter-mile from my personal training gym on Lee Road. So when I leave her house, it takes me twenty-five minutes now to get to Lee Road from Country Club. You can't do it. Even though you put speed bumps in to slow the traffic down, try to get through there now, because there are dump trucks, there's eighteen-wheelers, there's construction, irrigation, they're building constantly. Their piece of heaven is no longer. It's constant construction, and now you're just gonna pull it around. They're way behind on the project on Country Club, and it floods every time it rains up into the yards. Most of the time, we had to cut through, I guess it's the Plymouth, to get out of the neighborhood for months, months on end, if you wanted to get out of the neighborhood. And the cut-through that somebody mentioned going behind the ABC liquor, I've done it. I don't want to sit on Seventy-Ninety-two, because I want to get there. I've done that cut-through, and it's just gonna get worse. So I own property in Winter Park. I was born and raised in Winter Park and went to Winter Park High School. And although it's great to see some building and construction and life in town, there is no more green grass. There's nothing. I used to ride my bike. I never thought about it. I rode from here to Mount Ormbach, never worried about it. I wouldn't ride my bike from Country Club to my gym without fear of being run over. There's no place for pedestrians. There's no place for people to take their kids. And I feel extremely hopeless. It's a done deal. You don't care about the residents, because you haven't asked anybody on Country Club one thing. So it's a done deal. You said it. Something's gonna be built, but it's gonna be built at the expense of the residents.
Thank you.
Here you are.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm Terry Godsell, seven-five-oh Colarney Bay Court. I won't be so long. The history is that this whole neighborhood was set up as residential, because you know that there is a retirement home. Both communities are residential. There's a dead end on Trevillion. There's no curbs. There's nothing in there. It's a dead end. And I just want to say, please, don't change the comp plan. The history was that there's people, when they took all the time to put a comp plan together, they insisted on that area being residential and keep it that way. There's no need to have anything else. Turn it into a park or leave it alone. But we have, in Colarney Bay, have drainage. We have drains, we have drainage, all kinds of things that end there. When the rains hit, it drains into that, but yet it cannot drain into the lake. The lake is so high at times that it never drains into the lake, so it floods back. We have had, as Stephanie mentioned, a total expense of twenty thousand dollars because of the rains come in there. We didn't go to the city about it. We thought it was our responsibility. We are on a lift station. We are not your sewage at all. And I just want you not to make any changes at this present time and keep it, as history said, a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goddett.
Thank you.
Good evening. I guess I missed happy hour, didn't I? My name is Don Goddett, and I'm a resident of Winter Park. My wife, Desiree, and myself live at ten sixty Bonita Drive. We're actually right in the corner of Bonita and Palmer with a two-story, yellow Mediterranean house. I spent thirty-five years as a banker, here, mostly in Orlando. I came to Orlando in nineteen ninety, actually had moved from Tampa, was a banker with Barnett Bank, and came over to work for Beal Duncan and Sunbank in nineteen ninety. And everybody said, "Oh, you should live in Winter Park," but at the time, I couldn't afford it. And actually, I went to Atlanta, worked for SunTrust in Atlanta for three years. In two thousand and two, I had the opportunity to move back to Orlando. And I said, "If I'm going to move back to Orlando, I'm gonna live in Winter Park." It's the best thing I ever did. So in two thousand and two, I built a house where I currently reside now, on Bonita. I made some mistakes in my life. Buying WorldCom stock was not a good investment, but building a house in Winter Park's the best decision that I ever made. You know, I have to compliment the city, previous leaders, current leaders, residents, for building the town the way they have built it over the years. You know, it's funny, when I used to travel, you know, I'd tell people I was from Orlando, and they'd say, "Where?" And I'd say, "Winter Park." And now, wherever I go around the world, I say, "I'm from Winter Park," and there's so many people that know that and appreciate it. So thank you for everything you've done. I'm in favor of this development, and let me tell you the reasons why. First, when I was CEO of Sinovus Bank, we had one location downtown. It was in downtown office building. When I went to headquarters, when I took this job, I said, "I'd like to move out of downtown." It's really hard running a bank with one location. I'm not talking retail. I'm talking administration, executive offices, loan offices. And so I started looking around Winter Park for a Class A office building. Guess what? Very, very limited. We have a lot of restaurants, you know? We have hotels coming. We have, you know, a lot of different things, but we don't have very good, sorry. We don't have good Class A office space. The other thing is that I taught real estate finance for a long time. I got known as an expert in real estate finance. And one of the things that I would always preach is that when a commercial lender got an appraisal, the last thing you really want to do is you really don't want to go right to look at the valuation, the appraisal. What you really should do is you should look at how the appraisal was formed. And one of the most important things, which you all discussed earlier, was the highest and best use of a property. And so that's the one thing I used to teach my lenders, was to go to the appraisal, look at the highest and best use. You know, you can't go on Palmer Avenue and buy a house for six hundred thousand dollars, knock it down and build a one-thousand-square-foot house. It's not the highest and best use of that particular asset. Trey Vick and his team have done a phenomenal job devising a product that meets code, meets density, it's less than density. You know, you're not gonna find somebody that built an eight-thousand-square-foot office building there. It doesn't work. So he's done a phenomenal job coming up with a design and working with residents to build something that's feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Margene Olson. Call me Margene. Pardon? I'd love to. Or I'm too short for it. I brought a show-and-tell. Trey, on his photos there, he had the blue tarp building. And just if you can imagine, you're a little kid, and you're on ponies, and there's a man walking with you, and there's osprey, when there's fish bones, and he sees a stick, and he says, "That's a toy." He says, "I see a toy." And he, Mr. Al, who owned all that land, he made me these toys. And Trey's also a visionary, right? We need these developers, and it's all visionary. So these are my toys. From fifty-three years, I've been in this little tiny house next to the side, yes?
Can we put that up here?
Yes, put that up there, because nobody ever referred, actually, to her house. We gotta-
Pause the timer.
Pause the timer.
We gotta let people see where she lives.
And all recover. So I'm the woman in the little house, and Kathleen's my friend, who is a few years older than I, so apparently I'm elderly also, and I don't know that she has health problems and needs the money.
I'm sorry, would you hold on one sec? We're trying to help you, we're trying to-
The site plan is in-
Yeah.
Context.
Jeff, you know what we're looking for, Jeff?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in that building-
With the tarp is where he makes these- But she's south.
And Kathleen's, she doesn't mind to split the thing and have residential and have office either.
Russ, do you have an overhead shot where there's, it's the actual satellite aerial?
There's one on my presentation.
Thank you. So it looks to me that this building, if there is to be a building, will be jammed into my backyard. I'm not an office. I've lived in there all my life, pretty much.
Go back to the one you just had, guys.
And there is gonna be a dumpster right in my living room window. So I don't-
You mind orientating us here?
I think this is a residential area.
Just a second, word.
Are you-
Fourteen-fifteen Trevillion.
So there's a number there, fourteen-twenty-four. Can you see that?
I'm in a-
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Are you right next to that?
She's right south.
Okay.
And when this-
Now we're here, speaking.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
When it was all rezoned-
Start up again, David.
When it was all rezoned, I was a bit busy and didn't understand. I became an office, and so I'm not an office. It's a home. And it looks like the building, the projected building, will be right in my backyard, where I'll be now looking out my front window at a dumpster. Trey and I emailed back and forth, and the dumpster apparently is hygienic and doesn't smell. So then, it could be up by somewhere else, the dumpster. And moreover, back to Mr. Al, Margaret, they owned what became Chateau. They were apartments. She sold it to be affordable homes for people to live, like normal people, not whatever people on Palmer who are bankers. And she sold Plymouth, sorry, to become, on the stipulation that it'd be a senior residence. So I would love a park or residential. All of this about traffic, I don't really think it's about traffic. It's about people. I'd like to make new friends and have a residential area. That's why we live there. So apparently, just to gobble it all up, is, oh, and if I can still go on and bore you?
Actually, your time, you've got thirty seconds.
Praise the Lord.
Use it up.
So I'm distraught and out of my mind, because at five forty-four a.m. came the liquor store commercial dumpster. At six, believe it or not, I may know, six oh seven came another dumpster behind Gay Road, two dumpsters. Eight oh four came another dumpster right over. Now, there's three dumpsters. I went around the lake. I walk around Lake Colarney. I used to run, but now I walk. Nine thirty came Olive Garden dumpster. Nine forty-five, two other dumpsters, Colarney Bay. At ten thirty came my dumpster, yeah?
Thank you.
And I still haven't had recycle.
Okay. Thank you.
So would you want to live there, you know, really?
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Oh, pardon? And the dumpsters, my guys, I'm friends with the dumpster guys, it says "City of Culture and Heritage, Winter Park." I took a picture for it.
Yeah, even though cities of culture and heritage have dumpsters. Thank you.
Hi, David Rollbold. I live at six twelve Country Club Drive.
Dave, good to see you again.
Yes, good to see you too. I would just add to the, we've heard this before about the traffic, and you heard me argue for speed bumps and everything else. I was told at some point along the way, when we were doing, when Despondy was doing their project, that there was some sort of project where they're gonna be straightening out either Executive or, is it Webster across the street as part of the Ravinage Project?
Bennett.
Bennett. And it might help the community if you guys could explain, if somebody knows. Is that going to happen? Is that because, because there is a lot of concern in the Country Club Drive area, you know, certainly people, they're absolutely right. They're already doing it, and it's obviously gonna get worse. But they wouldn't be doing that if Executive, if you could cross at Executive. And I thought that that was part of the, as it stands right now, there's a median in Lee Road, in turn lanes. It seemed to be misplaced. There's a left-hand turn lane that turns into the front of Center State Bank. There's no driveway there. It's a turn lane into nowhere. If that were moved, I think it's twenty-five feet backwards, I think, then it would turn, it would open up a space and you could get across on Executive. So I don't know if you guys could enlighten us on what's happening with Bennett or with Executive and the light that's supposed to be put up there. I think that people would feel better about the traffic. I certainly would, if you guys could let us know what's going on with that.
So once we're done with public comment, we'll address that.
And then, yes, okay. And that's all I have to say.
Great. Thanks so much. All right, we're gonna close the floor to public comment. A couple things, there's, so before I open it up to the commission, let's just handle one or two things here. one or two things here. Because I do believe that there were some questions that we can address. The last one that brought up, Dave, was the alignment. Let's try to make this quick, Bronz, on that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the planned alignment for Bennett and Executive is, is still moving forward, working with the developer of Ravinage, who we built at their expense, that would create a traffic light onto Lee Road, so that would alleviate a lot of those traffic.
So, there will be a traffic light at Executive and Bennett?
And Bennett.
And Lee Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When it is warranted.
Right. Okay. And what, and, and tell me the timing on that, please?
Uh, the, the plan will be in place by the end of the year, but it really is, the, the applicant has to provide a yearly report to DOT.
And it's an F. dot issue?
Yes, when it will be warranted.
Okay, so, yeah, no, 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 we're not gonna, we're not, you know, no, no, I'm happy to take questions. I got...
I should've sent Jeff.
Mr. Weaver's the only one not with his hand on the microphone. But I would say, Mr. Seidel had his thumb there first, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with him. But let's try to, let's try to keep this brief, folks, so we can get back to kind of the issues at hand. And then, we also owe the applicant the opportunity to come and address some of the concerns of the citizens. Mr. Seidel?
Yeah, Bronz, just to clarify, is that final plans for the construction of the intersection will be ready by the end of the year?
Just the agreement in place by the end of the year, per the development order.
Okay, so, what I'm really anxious to get, and I've been saying this for a long time, is I want those final plans figured out, so when we're ready to go, we're ready to go. And, I mean, that's, to me, it's gonna take even longer if we don't get the final plans. I just wanna make that point. So, when we say this is gonna happen, I, I wanna see it happen. I've been pushing for that for quite some time, just so everybody knows.
We all agree. Commissioner Sprinkle?
Okay, so, we can do that without the DOT's permission, or don't we have to go through DOT? If we're sitting here telling these people they're gonna get a traffic light, and we don't get DOT to give them a traffic light, then we're not gonna look very good. So, don't we still have another big hoop to jump through called DOT?
We do, but I don't think with, given the current traffic situation there, the density that's being proposed in Ravinage to the north, that warranting this traffic light will be an issue.
Okay, well, we're gonna hold you to that, because I don't wanna be the one that told all these folks they're getting a traffic light, and then, because, for some reason, we can't get it through. I thought there was an issue with how close it was to the previous traffic light.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper, and then we'll have the applicant.
No, relative to Bennett, my understanding is that the developer's agreement that came forward as part of the annexation requires him to align the road, and then, so the thing that we can assure people is that the road will be aligned.
Correct.
And then, every year, they will evaluate the traffic to determine if the light is warranted. Is that correct?
Yes, and we are, we already have preliminary designs that it could either be Executive or Bennett could be realigned. Bennett will be realigned through the applicant's property, and we will make sure that we have enough turning movements, that sort of thing. So, that's what we're working on.
Mr. Weaver, did you want a stab at this?
No, I just wanted to tell Bronz hello. How are you?
Okay.
Good to see you, sir.
I, I do have a couple of comments.
So, if, if you don't mind, though, too, I don't wanna go too deep into some of these questions, because I think the applicant deserves the opportunity to, to address those two, so, but, but I'll certainly...
Just making a, an observation. So, our code, we talked about stormwater retention on site, and our code calls for two inches of retention, correct?
I'm gonna have to defer to an actual engineer on that one, sir, so...
Two inches, right? Okay. So, we had six consecutive days of rain about a week ago. One day, it was 2.6, one day, it was 3.2, and then on Sunday, we had 4.3 inches of rain. This is, that 2.3 inches is what I'm concerned about here. And Greg, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Seidel, you, you talked about property damage, and, you know, we've, we've heard from one of the Clarnie Bay residents that there, there is flooding damage down there. And also, if you look along Executive, because there are no curbs there, the asphalt's crumbling into all those gravel lots there. So, there, there is damage occurring to standing water and so forth. So, again, I, I would like to have the city consider doing some stormwater project on Executive, Gay, possibly Trevillion, before we, you know, get into a big, heavy-duty development that's gonna channel water into those streets and into those developments as well.
Yes, sir. Again, it's probably important to point out that the Clarnie Bay original development did put the stormwater to be held in the property, to go through those swales and to be held on the property, that was the Mr. Markott mentioned from 1985.
But they're downhill from the tallest plateau in the neighborhood.
Okay. Trey, would you all like to address any of the concerns that came up here before we continue on with our discussion?
Can you address the park issue that people seem to think that that should be? Can anybody address that? Because we have people out here that are saying, turn it into a park. So, we need to at least answer that response.
Well, that's probably not a question for you. Yeah, I would say, and I know it's, I know it's across 1792, but there is one of the largest parks in the city that, that's, that's close, with MLK Park. I know it's not exactly right across, right next to you. I would tell you that you're closer to a park than I am, where I live. But there's no plans for the city to take that on, and I don't believe what we would pay for parkland over there would, would be acceptable to the owner of that property. So, that's where we stand with that. Trey?
Just to that one last point, and just in an effort of, like, clearing house facts, we did present the site to the Winter Park Land Trust, which was created for the whole premise of privately funding parkland to build parks for the residents of Winter Park. I tabled our progress on the site, I presented it to them, they took it to their board in April, and actually came back to me with the decision that they have no interest in buying it. So, I wanna be clear that that was done, and, and we needed to be able to do that, so we could stand up here and say that we took that effort and, and vetted it out. So, so we did, we did do that. That was the only piece I wanted to address there. I'll go super fast, because I know we've been here a long time, we've belated a lot of these points. Stormwater, I just addressed really, really brief. We've heard several times, we have to retain our stormwater on site, right? So, if there's an existing drainage and flooding issue in the Clarnie Bay condos, it, it sounds, if you see bub, like bubbling water coming out of a storm drain, it sounds like the storm drain system that you guys have is not working properly. So, there might be some engineering evaluation needs to happen there, I don't, I don't know. But I do know that our site is not gonna drain into their storm system, and thus, it's been retained and treated on our site. So, I just wanna make sure we address that, because it's important. The Despondy site on Country Club has been addressed, at the failure of that storm system that was engineered. I was there today, and, you know, I don't wanna try to use that little machine, because the lady got it right the first time and almost screwed up. But, they're blocked right now because it's under construction. And that's designed and required, because they don't want silt to make the system fail. So, the system's not even fully operational right now, because it's under construction. The other thing I would say to that, is I drove it today, there is a slew of, of cars in a very tight space on Country Club, driven by the tradesmen that are working in those homes. I think that will subside traffic from that perspective, once construction's done, and they're moving along well. So, I just bring those few points up, because I think they're relevant to a few things you guys have heard. I guess the last couple things I would say is, you know, Margine, I didn't mention you by name earlier, because I didn't want you to, I don't wanna offend anybody by mentioning, calling anybody out. But, I, I will say, I'm totally comfortable moving that dumpster, I completely get your point, and I don't want that to be an issue for you. So, we can move it away from your house, and I think that's, that's fine, it doesn't impair us, and it would help you. We're happy to do that. And the building we talked about, that's a setback challenge. We can move the building back up towards Gay, which gives a little more space from your backyard, happy to do that as well. But, we have to vet that out. And again, it's, it's like the, you know, you take one, you give the other. So, I'm willing to work, I think we've shown that as a fact. So, I don't know, I think at this point, the last thing I'll say is, I know there's dialogue about, should we change a comp plan, right? I mean, it's like, we have a comp plan, why do we change it? And I hear the historical point about the neighborhood, but the comp plan was written when it was gone through the whole comp plan process, I guess, two years ago, maybe. And it contemplated doing exactly what we're doing. There's language in there discussing what we're doing, and we're following the protocol that the city laid out for. So, I just don't think those are fair to be lost on us. And, and I don't wanna rattle on up here, but I just feel like those are important points. Happy to answer any questions. And John, if I totally missed something, please correct me, but...
No, you did great. The only thing I do wanna make sure we understand is, is an exfiltration system. So, an exfiltration system is, there's pipes and rock underground. So, the water gets captured in the site, early in the site. So, it doesn't sheet flow to the south corner, it act, or the corner where, where you think. It actually stays on site, and it percolates right where it's at. And as we talked about, we could do a series of systems, starting from the north, as we go south, have a series of system, and it perks right into the ground. There's actually four foot of fall across this site. And it, it, the water comes off pretty intense because of that four foot of fall. So, actually, the exfiltration systems will allow the water to stay on site and perk on site, and we would allow the pre-development discharge rate out to Trevillion, as we did in pre-development. So, I, I want you to kind of think about a system underground. That's where the paved drains is really neat, because you don't have to worry about slopes or capturing it all in one spot. It actually, actually, where it falls, it goes in, you don't even have to use pipes. It's a series of pavers, they're about eight to 12 inches tall, and then you, all you do is, instead of doing a normal pavement section, which is even from sustainability perspective, it's better, because normally, you have like an inch and a half of asphalt, an eight-inch base, maybe line rock, and a subbase. Well, you simply place like two to three foot of rock right on top of existing soils, so the percolation stays tremendous. Like I was telling you, the Geotech report said, wow, you have perk rates over 40 feet per day, but we're capping you at 40. I mean, we just feel it's not appropriate to use a number. And then, we wanna include another safety factor, another safety factor. So, we're gonna be very conservative. I've, I've been engineering in central Florida for 25 years, I've done three or four hundred projects, and this, we will, we will, there will be no off-site negatives when this project's done.
Mr. Seidel is so happy you brought John here today, do you know that? He's just dying over there with his water.
I'm just trying to, to point that Commissioner Weaver brought up, what storm depth are you gonna be designing for? Are you, is it the 25-year, 24-hour, pre-post-development rate?
Absolutely. I mean, whatever St. John's in your city, so, yes, I mean, the two inches water from a quarter...
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify his point. So, he's actually designing this system for roughly eight to eight and a half inches rainfall event.
That's correct.
So, it's, the two inches retention is the treatment. And then, but he's gotta make sure when we get eight inches of rain, that you don't have any more water go off the site tomorrow than goes off the site today. So, that's what he's charged with. So, it would be an eight-inch rainfall event, that you can't increase the amount of runoff going to someone else's property.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So, let's, uh, thank you, John. We'll have you back up in a few, hopefully, we don't need to. But, we, and, and that's no disrespect to you, I appreciate everything you said, and I, I really do. But, but we gotta start making some decisions up here. Commissioner Cooper, you have the floor.
For me, I think our biggest job is compatibility. I really do think that's the question. Obviously, I did not realize that the property was rezoned after the single-family homes were there. That's something I'm not aware of. Jeff, are you aware of that? Does your memory go back that far? Were these, mine either. Okay, usually, you're pretty good. Anyway, so, so I wanna talk just to compatibility for a minute. When we consider compatibility, we look at the like-zoned property, as we talked about on the R3, and we look at it within a certain area. So, I looked at all the R, the O2 office zoning within this block, within this area, actually. And all of the buildings were, you know, 1,200 square feet. So, I said, well, obviously, 25,000 square feet's not compatible with that, you know, seven times, eight times. So, then I said, okay, well, let's look at compatibility with what would come after this. And so, I made the assumption, and it's not a good assumption, Ms. Olson, so forgive me, but I assumed that all the remaining O2 properties were congregated, and someone built another office building at 45% floor area ratio. And that office building would only be 16,000, just under 16,000 square feet. So, even if you took, because the property, there are one, two, three, there are four properties at 88, 8,800 square feet apiece, and then you apply the 45% to it, and it comes out to just under 16,000 square feet.
Were you assuming one story or two stories?
No, I, I was, I didn't make an assumption relative to one to two stories, I simply assumed floor area ratio, so I'm talking square footage only, square footage only, not footprint. So, so I looked at that, and I said, well, even if someone congregates all the rest of those O2 properties, it's still not, it's still not what I would consider compatible. So, I had a problem with that. But, then...
Commissioner, I'm, I'm trying to understand your statement here.
Okay, but, but I...
When you say they bring all the O2 properties...
Right. We could show, the O2 properties, a couple of those properties are C3, so they don't count. But, the O2 properties that are there, there are...
Are the, the... Outside of this property?
Oh. There are five.
Outside.
So, if, one.
Okay, so, you're outside the property.
Right. So, I'm assuming that we build, that we allow this, and we build it. And we built it because we think that it's going in the direction of future development. So, then the question becomes, what could that future development look like? So, I looked at one, two, three, four, five, no, four additional O2 properties, and I said, the next guy that comes along, he's gonna congregate all those properties too. And he's gonna do 45% floor area ratio, which is what O2 looks like. And if he did that, his building would only be 15,851 square feet approximately. And so, we're still 10,000 square feet below the 25,000 square foot building. So, for me, that says that I've got a hard time saying to my neighbors, it's compatible. It's compatible with today or with tomorrow, you know, looking forward into the future. However, I keep coming back to, if I look at, and this is important for all of you to know, because I work very hard to represent your interests, an R3 property on this lot is going to be at least, I don't have it, I did have it in front of me, I think, oh, there it is, 55,000 square feet, even if we keep it at two stories, 75% floor area ratio, which is what I would anticipate this commission would entertain under conditional use, not three stories, 115%. But, so if we went with that, you're talking about a 55,000 square foot building, as opposed to a 25,000 square foot building that's being proposed today. So, that's what I had to say to myself, what is truly better for my neighbors? And that's what I have been struggling with. So, I just want you to know that. You have not been ignored, it is not a done deal. I probably spent four hours worrying about this, walking those lots, considering the size of his building versus the size of the R3 that will follow. Even if we split it up, even if we split it up, there's, you know, that's going to be a very large building. So, I think he probably has a few more parking spaces than he needs, but I understand he wants to hold out in case there's a medical use, I get that. If it's not, it sure would be nice to have green space, pervious space, you know. I hear you saying that everything that's in the Kemley Horn letter would be a condition of approval. Is that fair statement? Okay. And, and you're willing to move the dumpster as a condition of approval? That's, I think all those things are fair. I don't know how, I don't know how much I care about that bike path. I thought it was a great idea, I thought it looked good. But if it's something that the neighbors are opposed to, I'm very flexible about that. So, that, that's sort of where I am. And I, I think I'm coming down on the side of approving this development, and I just wanted you to know why. It's because I do believe that this will have less negative impact on your community. And I do believe that the pervious space that he is presenting is more equivalent with what you're gonna get out of R3 than it is out of what you're gonna get on any other office property that's coming through. So, you know, I didn't come in here with my mind made up, but I really do think that in five years, I can still sit down and have coffee with you and say, you know, wasn't that bad? And, and that's where I'm at. So, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take one last lap through. Commissioner Cooper started us off. Mr. Weaver, any last comments before I call for a vote, sir?
Yes, as always, I'm concerned about water quality in our lakes. And, again, I'll reiterate that these streets just aren't ready for development. I, I would like the city to take more time and work out the stormwater issues before they allow such a massive development.
Thank you. Ms. Sprinkle? Anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Seidel?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I often get asked, is, is it hard being on the commission? And for most of the answers, I say, no, it's not really that hard. But I can tell you, this is one of the hardest things that I've had to evaluate in some time. And, you know, a lot of these decisions are personal for people. They're personal decisions... They're personal decisions, this is in your neighborhood, this affects your neighborhood. People often ask me if it's going on my neighborhood, how would I vote? And, um, and, you know, that's the reason I've reached out to Trey and had conversations with Trey. And I will tell you, I was the one who asked Trey to see if the land trust would buy it to make it a park, and that's the first time I've ever had a developer go ahead and talk to the land trust and see if they would actually buy it to make it a park. So, you know, that was impressive to me, that, you know, he was looking out, not, you know, for the city's interest, and being, you know, just not trying to jam something through, and being careful and trying to come up with something. And, you know, there's some, like, for me, you know, quite honestly, the connection to Trevillion and Gay Road would actually make the situation better for everybody. I cut through all over town, I am accused as I'm Mr. Cut Through Traffic, because I don't want to sit on 1792, but you know what? I cut through respectfully. I drive the speed limit, I look out for people. I'm not, I'm not the teenager I used to be, okay?
Yeah, you did.
And guilty as charged, but I, I mean, in all seriousness, that is, that's what makes in my mind our city work, because our roads are full. And so, and, you know, a lot of reason there's traffic is because we're good economic boom times right now. Everyone remembers the recession, and we didn't really have traffic problems in the recession. So, it's how do we manage that traffic? How do we make it better? I'd like to see that signal at Executive Drive and Lee Road get done as soon as possible, because I like to cut through back there to get to I-4 and not sit on 1792. So, um, but with regards to what's happening with this development, we had another development come through the other day, which was a Wendy's at the corner of Fairbanks and 1792. And what I try to look at is what the alternative is, and what makes this one hard is I have people wanting both things. Some people, you know, wanting residential, some saying the office is okay, some wanting a park, and it's not really consensus in the neighborhood of what, what should really happen here, and I don't know that you could get that consensus. And so, that's, that's what makes it hard on my end. And then, as Commissioner Cooper had mentioned about, you know, looking in the future and down the road, the reason I approved the Wendy's building at, at, at Fairbanks, and it was part office, was because it's a relatively small building. Yes, there's going to be traffic generated at lunch, and it has an office, but the impact on, you know, the mass and scale on Winter Park, it still fits scale. And I actually had conversations with Trey on the building here. I asked him, I said, you know, I see this same kind of building in every city I go to, can we do something with the architecture to make it more unique to Winter Park? And that's kind of, if you think of that area of town, it's different than the downtown area. And to me, that's, you know, we don't have an architectural review board, we don't, you know, we have an architect that helps out with things. But that was a comment I made, and he said, that's probably something he could look at, but he couldn't guarantee me anything. So, at least he's being honest about it, right? And then, um, so, for me, is this the worst thing that could happen here? And in my mind, the answer is no, there's a lot worse. Is this, has compromise taken place? I do see some compromises taking place. Would I appreciate if someone came in and built six single-family homes and said, hey, I'm building six homes? Yeah, I would appreciate that, but it's hard to get people to do that when these, when these dollars are out there. So, um, you know, again, I wanted, you know, the impacts to the city, we are working on the traffic on 1792, they're doing a study right now on the road itself, we're going to put some, um, we're doing some aesthetic improvements, and I'm trying as part of that to get involved in some actual traffic improvement. So, the city is, you know, wanting to make, work with the DOT to make some of these improvements, and I think at the end of the day, traffic is bad for everybody, it is bad now. I, the city's working to make it better, and by the time this opens up, I really hope that signals in, and then it will be better, and a lot of these houses will be done, and so, that will mitigate some of those increased trips that we're talking about. Um, I've kind of said a lot, you know, I said, this was a hard one, there's a lot, you know, the bike trail to me, it, you know, it would be really neat if there's a trail that went all around Lake Kilarney, back towards Fairbanks, that people could walk on and not be going through the private property. There's a couple developments to the south, the guy's trying to do a hotel, there's a park there, can you have a trail that goes by Hillstones and goes all the way back? I think these are good things, the trails. And so, for me, I, I would like to see that bike path, because I could see the people on the other side of Lee Road, once we put the light in, they could all come down, they could go across at the light, come through the Kmart Plaza, and get on this trail and connect to another trail that takes them down to Lake Kilarney. And so, I look at these as all kind of connectivity improvements for the pedestrians and an improvement in lifestyle. Imagine not having it on 1792, I would like that, and so, that's kind of how I view this, and so, hopefully, I would like to keep the bike path myself, and I would like to, you know, is, can we do a, can we do an exit only down on Trevillion, so when the people are leaving at the end of the day, they're not going out to Gay Road? If they want to go south, they can turn right.
Commissioner, you can make an amendment if you so choose to do that, I'm not sure it would be supported, but you could certainly, that's your...
I'm just bringing these things up, because Sarah's next, but thank you.
Sarah already bailed, didn't she?
So, the only thing about Trevillion is, the last time we were here, the folks down at the end of Trevillion were adamant about not keeping that open, and that is what we closed, and that's what he heard, and that's what's happened here. So, to go back and open it back up again, it's kind of like what Trey said, it's, you know, you just go in a circle. So, I would not be in favor of opening up Trevillion. I don't, I think the bike path makes some sense, but again, whether, where it is, I don't care, but I don't know where you're going to get on Kilarney on a, on a public place anyway.
Okay, guys, we're going to call this...
Long-term planning.
I have just some final comments. Okay, Commissioner, after my comments, I'll certainly take some amendments if you'd like to offer them. Voltaire said that the best of the, the best, uh, the best is the enemy of good, and so, every time we try to address every little issue, there's also the saying that, you know, what is it, a camel is a horse designed by committee? I mean, we can sit here all day long and say, what's good, what's not good, we want to change this, and it is, it's a little bit like a balloon, you squeeze one side, you're going to, you're going to inflate it somewhere else. So, the walkway, I say, let's go forward with the walkway, we can monitor it, if it becomes a place where people hang out, all you've got to do is extend the wall a little bit, and I think everybody will be happy if you're, if, if it is an issue. I'm not as concerned with drainage, I think there is no drainage, there's no retention on that site right now, as Commissioner Seidel laid out, and as John laid out, I think you, any, the retention that you guys are providing will help alleviate any of the concerns in and around the area. I think Kilarney Bay has some, has some concerns and some challenges, but I think that's mostly on your property, and I think that perhaps the city can assist in looking at it, they, they will assist in looking at it, I'm going to assume, and, and that may be something that you all have to take off on your own. It doesn't sound like it's coming off of this property. So, traffic, I know traffic's an issue, it's an issue for everybody around there, we understand that, we appreciate that. I think this will, this will create more concentrated traffic at certain times of the day, but you're not going to have the constant, and you're not going to have the traffic on the weekends. As has been said up here, and has been said from, from folks in the, out there, it's not going, something's going to happen, and I think our minds, my mind was certainly not made up when I got up here, I can, I, I think some others were not as well, but listening, I believe that this is probably the best project right now. I would hate to see that many condos going in there and townhouses, I think you would be very upset with some of the challenges and some of the density if that was offered instead. And Commissioner Seidel brought it up, if this was my neighborhood, yeah, this is probably the project I would like if this was my neighborhood, over some of the others. This was by no way a done deal, I can promise you that. I was actually, I was not optimistic about this based on our last meeting, when we gave Troy the option to table this and pull this, I, I didn't think he'd come back with, with what he came back with. So, I applaud you for reaching out to the residents and the community, and working with staff. I know, again, everybody's not happy, but I, I do believe what you brought back was honestly more, more than I thought you were going to come back with, so thank you. With that, I will open up for amendments, but it, but that's it at this stage, really, I think everybody's said their piece, so let's look for some amendments, and we'll move through those quickly. Commissioner Cooper, you have the floor.
I do, I'm just trying to make sure that the conditions reflect our current discussion, so, at any point, if you think I'm overstating what you've agreed to, just let me know.
Can I ask you a question? I'm going to have staff, who's closest with this based on the way it came through with, with, I want to make sure that all the, that there was just a simple motion made to follow, and I believe there's only one motion made, correct? So, I'm going to assume that the motions that were made were for, they were Commissioner Seidel and Commissioner Sprinkle. I will take those as for the comp plan, the zoning, as well as the conditional use? Okay, great, so we have three motions there, confirmed, and...
Based on Kurt's guidance, if you have the applicant accepting, saying they accept things like moving the dumpster, those become part of the application.
So, Commissioner Cooper's going to go through those and possibly others, and let's just make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
And, and we can do these, Jeff, however you want to, but the motions that I would make is, as I read through your packet, condition number three, do you have the existing conditions that you could put up there? Condition number three did not include the shade trees that they had committed to along Trevillion, so, and I'm assuming that that's acceptable, it was in your packet.
Just to have the record that the applicant agreed...
Right, so, condition number three is to add the shade trees along Trevillion. Condition number four would be amend that to include the requirement that the applicant construct a lighted five-foot pedestrian walkway, landscape with live oak, magnolia, sweet vipernum connecting Gay and Trevillion, and that the wall be a capped masonry wall. I think that's...
Okay, and Commissioner, before we do that, I want to make sure that the maker of the motion also agrees to that, and the seconder agrees to both those two conditions.
And that's what the plan is for.
Okay, great, we're fine.
There, there's nothing creative here, it's just...
No, I understand. I'm taking it as I'm sneaky.
When I hit the creative one, this one is a creative one, it's almost a question, but we've had this problem in the past. I, I wanted to add a condition that the developer is responsible for the maintenance of both sides of his proposed wall.
Yes, that's in our property maintenance code, it's already required.
So, that will be taken care of, all right, thank you. And condition number eight is that all representations made in the Kimley Horn letter to the city of Winter Park dated June the 7th, Lee Gay Road Office Complex are agreed to be conditions of this approval.
They are part of the application, because they were submitted to you as part of the request.
And Ms. Seidel and Ms. Sprinkle, are those accessible?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, we have a...
She did the, the moving the, oh...
I'm so sorry, I thought, thank you very much, I've written that down, I don't see it. The, thank you. The amendment that the dumpster be relocated to not align with the adjacent single-family home to the southwest, southeast, thank you.
Mr. Vick?
Can we just say it'll be on the southern portion of the property, which takes it down Trevillion away from margins? Just because we, we need to...
Don't know where it is.
But I just, yeah, I don't want to get...
I just didn't want to get it right up next to her house, is my issue, so I don't want it on the east side.
So, maybe...
Yeah, it'll be on the southern border.
So, the southwest.
Okay, so...
Thank you. I can change that to say that the dumpster will be moved to the southwest portion of the site, thank you.
Okay, good, is that Mr. Seidel, Ms. Sprinkle?
Mm-hmm.
Acceptable? Fantastic. Debbie, would you please...
I had one, one last item to add that we had discussion, and that's, you know, the...
Is it an amendment, sir, or is it just more discussion? Because I'd really want to move this.
No, it's just to ensure that the, the landscape islands, he's showing there are double parking spaces, they're 16-foot wide, that will assure that the trees in the lot can grow large, so, I want to, you know, say that he will continue to use the islands as shown in the current plan.
Okay, that was accepted, and Ms. Sprinkle as a seconder? Yes, great.
Mayor, before you proceed, can we, can you restate the motion, make sure we know what's...
I don't know if I can anymore.
It's a single motion, it's not an amendment, it's why...
No, it's a single motion, and the, and the discussion items that were just brought up were agreed to by the maker and the seconder of the motion, so, it's all included.
Including all staff, conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, are you clear, is that good enough for you, Mr. Artman? Okay, great, so what we're going to do is read the roll, Debbie, on the first, which is the comp plan, please read that.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
No.
Mayor Leary?
Yes. And now, on the second, which is zoning?
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
No.
Mayor Leary?
Yes, and now on the conditional use.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
No.
Mayor Leary?
Yes, thank you. And again, thank you, everybody, the community for being here this evening, the community for participating all along in this. Again, as earlier, I think we have a better project than when we started, and I want to thank the applicant too, and all, everybody you brought with you for taking the time to work with everybody on this. Thank you, guys, good luck. Randy?
Yes, sir, we have an ordinance to read.
Mr. Artman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number blank dash 19, an ordinance of the city of Winter Park, Florida authorizing the issuance of its not-to-exceed $15 million water and sewer refunding revenue bond series 2020 in order to refund all or a portion of the city's outstanding water and sewer refunding and improvement revenue bond series 2010, providing authorization for this ordinance, providing findings, providing for the payment of such bonds from the net revenues derived from the water and sewer system of the city, and providing an effective date.
Commissioner Cooper?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions for staff? Okay, let's open up the floor to public comment, because the engineers are doing something else. No comments from the, from the, from the public. Mr. Weaver, any comments on this item, sir? We're going to go to a vote unless you have any questions. Mr. Seidel, you as well, we've taken a motion, we've accepted it, and public has been offered opportunity.
It's to, uh...
This is item 11C, the refunding?
Yep, I'm going to go with that.
Okay, good. Mr. Weaver, you okay?
I talked to the city manager earlier, and he answered my questions, so I'm ready.
Okay, Debbie, please read the roll.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes, thank you.
Can we just acknowledge that Jay Glover was here from PFM patiently waiting to save you that $220,000 a year?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being, you are...
I've got grand plans for that money.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Do you have a, do you have a baby yet?
A lot of time.
All right, tell your Sarah hello.
Good work, go have a drink, thank you, gentlemen. Randy, number 10, 11D.
Also an ordinance to read?
Yes. Mr. Artman, sorry, I'm still reeling, I'm punch drunk. Yes, sir, excuse me.
Ordinance number blank dash 19, an ordinance of the city of Winter Park, Florida vacating and terminating a portion of the ditch right-of-way depicted on the plat of Trotters Replat, as for the plat thereof recorded in plat book J, page, page... Looks like 58, Public Records of Orange County, Florida, that encumbers the property identified as Orange Property Appraiser Parcel Number 072230876000172, provided for conflicts recording and an effective date.
Great. Troy?
All right, so in your package, I believe you have a plan. What's really weird is that from the original plat, there was a drainage right-of-way that went diagonally across this parcel, and then, I think it was a ditch originally, and then it was piped. There was a house built over the pipe, and the pipe, you know, was there to the day, to this day. Mr. Bryan bought the parcel, wants to build another house, and obviously doesn't want a pipe under it. So, what we're agreeing to do is to vacate the existing ditch or drainage right-of-way drainage right-of-way and construct and develop a, he's going to grant to us a new drainage easement along the property line that makes more sense. And so, that's what this agreement actually does. And the first reading of this ordinance is the vacate and then he's going to grant. And we're also going to participate with him in buying materials and he's going to do the construction. So, that's typical where, where we've got these weird situations like.
Okay, we're going to have separate motions on these ones as well.
Just curious, percentage-wise, do we share about fifty-fifty or do we share eighty-twenty or how do, what a share?
Given the construction market, he's, he's probably paying more like seventy-five percent and we're probably doing about twenty-five percent.
Well, that's good. Good negotiating, Troy. Thank you. I'd like to move it.
Okay. Would that be the first or the second or?
I'd like to move both.
Okay.
Second, both.
Thank you. We'll open up the floor to public comment. Anybody?
I have a question for Troy. Drainage, come on.
Hang on one second. Hang on one second. Since I ha- I've opened the floor already, I think it's going to be a pretty quick close.
And Mayor, if I could, that, that's a motion for approval of the agreement regarding vacation and re-closing.
And the vacation ordinance.
And the vacation ordinance as well.
Yes, I took both at once. Okay, we'll close the floor to public comment. Mr. Seidel?
Troy, did you guys actually locate a pipe under there? And is it under the easement? Do you know?
Well, yeah, we've seen it from this, from this manhole. We've seen it from this manhole and they look like they're going like this and the house is right here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, but it does, it does line up with the easement location?
Yes, it does.
That's all. Okay, excellent.
Yeah, it lines up with the existing. The, the new pipe will be constructed in the new easement.
Well, I just meant where the adjacent property, because it kind of comes in at that angle?
Yeah.
Like, so it's got to line up with that adjacent easement. Like, was the other property owner interested in maneuvering it all or you just taking care of this?
No. I mean, we, I'm not sure we asked and I think that there's some big trees there too that kind of limit the ability for it to move.
So, you'll be putting a manhole there where it bends and then goes around and bends?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, I've had enough of you engineers for tonight. All right? The most engineers we've had per minute in the, in a city commission meeting in a long time.
Get used to it.
Oh, boy. All right. So, Debbie, would you please read the roll first on the agreement?
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes. Now on the ordinance, please.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Leary?
Yes. Thank you. We are moving on to commissioner reports. Mr. Seidel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give a little report. I went to the Winter Park's Fourth Annual Juneteenth Celebration and where they rededicated Airman Richard Hall's statue. And I got a little note from Cynthia Wood that I'll just read here because it kind of summarizes what went on. But the Winter Park Public Library is proud to be a co-ordained sponsor with the Hannibal Square Heritage Center and the City of Winter Park. Thanks to a partnership with ACIOM Fine Art Gallery, A-C-I-O-M, am I saying that right? Hannibal Square Heritage Center, the City of Winter Park Housing Authority, the Winter Park Community Center, Creole D School of Art and the double A R P. A variety of interactive presentations, art exhibits, arts and booths are available and enjoyed on Friday and Saturday. We had three representatives, one state legislator and residents from all the areas gathered to honor ninety-five-year-old Tuskegee Airman Richard Hall Jr. and to rededicate his statue at the Heritage Center. So, it was a very nice time. This was Saturday afternoon at noon and the rededication of the statue and a lot of things were said. It really gave you a good belief in people in general. So, it was a all-around good day and I was, I was proud to and humbled to represent the city.
Thank you. Ms. Sprinkle? I'm sorry, what are you doing?
I'm now.
Oh, sorry.
I hadn't even got to the big stuff yet. No, I, I was just going to mention one, one item so that, you know, I had extensive conversations about the library with Sally Flynn and with Charlie Williams and about, you know, where I stand on things at the moment. So, I'm always happy to talk to anybody else if they'd like to talk about the library. I'm happy to meet with them one-on-one and go through. And I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So, thank you.
Ms. Sprinkle?
Okay, so I have three things. First of all, I had the opportunity to go to the chief judge's, judge's retirement the other day and he called out Jack Lane. And it was wonderful because he said Dr. Jack Lane was his, his most powerful person when he was in college. And it was just really fun to have Fred Lawton say that and Jack and was there. He came to the, to the event. It was just neat as a teacher and some, when somebody says to you, "You were important to me." And there were sixty-four judges sitting up there. So, it was very impressive. It was fun. The, also, I have two things that I want to bring up that I'd like for somebody to, just if we get three nods for y'all to think about. Okay, you're going to hear them anyway. All right. The first one is I wish that we could find a place that has a road like Aloma, okay, that they've been able to successfully fix so that people will actually walk on it. And so, the reason, I mean, I, sometimes I'm a little jaded when people talk up here about how bad the traffic is because I get to go out on Aloma and I many times get, take cut-throughs. I know Randy cut-through on Cortlandt all the time through my neighborhood. So, cut-throughs and you, you can't go by my house.
He's got a speed limit, doesn't he?
But I will tell you.
If we just stopped staff and elected people from cutting through, we wouldn't have any cut-through issues in Winter Park.
We got, we got cut-through Greg over here. But I just wish there was a, somebody could find a place where they've been successful in taking a road like that and making it better. So, I don't know where that place is. I, I just know you have brilliant people on your staff. I'd love to see something like that. The second one is about, another thing is, is everybody up here is talking about traffic and construction and all the yard trucks and everybody's talking about how hard it is to drive around town. And it is. Every one of us has to go slow. And I really do live in fear that some of those blowers and those people that are blowing in the streets are going to get run over because they don't even hear you coming. And so, I'm just concerned, again, is there anything that we as a city can do to try to control that to, to some degree? And I don't know what it is. I have no idea. I don't have a, I just know that it's an issue and we all feel it and that's what's making people so distressed. So, two things like that that I just want us to look into and see if anybody else has done it. And maybe nobody else is bothered by it, but I am.
So, I, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Your second request, Aloma, I'm with you. If there's a case study we can find for something like Aloma, I'm there for you. If I have a, I don't know. I think it's just asking staff to see if they can find something. And then regarding your comment on leaf blowers and I'm, I don't know exactly what you're asking, keep them out of the streets because.
And yard trailers.
The yard trailer.
With so much construction and so much yard trailers right now.
Yeah.
It is really hard because our streets are not made for that.
So, what, what exactly are you asking? That we just enforce and we tell them not to park there?
No, no. I mean, they're going to have to park somewhere.
We need, we need parking plans on the construction plans.
And I know we have that.
So, that, that contractors will park here.
That, that as well as the fact that is there any other city that's figured out a way? I don't, I don't want the yard people to go away because I like mine, okay? But I don't know if that, you know, is there any other way to do it? That's all.
I don't know.
We talked about leaf blowers being a problem. So, just, just keep them in mind.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
I have three things and one of them we may have already taken care of. And one of them, I have two engineers here, so I probably shouldn't even be mentioning. But I'm going to start with the stormwater issue and I want you to know that was already there. I want you to know that was already there before it became so stinky tonight. I know.
You just heard what he goes.
I just hate it. It hurts. And Cindy tells me to back away from the microphone but push the button. You know, I need about four more inches to make that work. Okay, so that, the first thing for me was the stormwater issues. And this was before we had tonight's conversation only because I, you know, I've been contacted just this week. I think the email went to everybody about concerns on Venetian Way, concerns on Orange Avenue, concerns at Arbor Park, concerns at Morrison Harper. So, I don't, we're not doing something right and maybe it's because we haven't got enough money to do it right. So, what I really want to know before we talk about the budget this year is where does staff recognize the stormwater challenges to be and what is the price tag? And, and I don't mean try to scare us with giving us an eighty-million-dollar price tag. I mean, let's talk about, let's talk, yeah, let's talk about fixing it or at least moving in the direction of fixing it with some reasonable plan that we can commit a given amount of money to every year because that, we're hearing it a lot from people. And, and as we cover more and more pervious space, it's just going to get worse and worse. So, I guess, you know, the real question is, I know it's a big number, but I'm, I'm, I'm tired of having to face people and just say it's a big number. If we have to reduce the amount of impervious coverage that we allow, then we need to do it. And that's what I hear a lot, is that we're covering every square inch of the earth. So, yes, we have storage, you know, stormwater problems. But I think we need to bite that bullet. We need to get some staff input and figure out what it's going to cost so that we can put something in the budget to try to help it. And whether that's by raising taxes or diverting funds from other areas where maybe they're not as needed, I just think stormwater needs to come to the top.
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask, I have not heard anything about the Onico Road flooding, the one that, with the Seminole County ditch. Does that work in Troy this summer so far? I haven't heard any.
Yeah, we haven't had problems since we did.
Cleaned it?
Bitch clean out.
Okay. So, I just wanted to point out that when we, we had a problem, that was a daily recurring issue. We've had pretty bad rain and so far everything's working okay. So, we do have the ability to solve these things.
No, I got it. And all I'm saying is let us put the focus on it. And it's not fair to say to staff, put the focus on it if we haven't given them the money to do it. So, that's sort of where I'm at. I would actually like us to do, and I don't want to use the term zero-based budgeting, but I would like for us to have each department present to us what it takes to do their job really. Because here's what I hear from residents, the stormwater and we're not maintaining the things we have. And why are you guys wanting to build more if we're not maintaining what we have? So, my question is, and it's a fair question, what does it really take to maintain this city at a standard that Randy, even if it's a minimal standard that we're comfortable with, what does that number really look like? You know, I think, and I know that's taxes and I get that, but maybe that's what we need to do. Okay, so making my Republican friend, very nervous, I have to move on. I'm a, I'm a Republican. I'm going to confess, I'm going to confess that.
You're making your, you're making your friend who's been here since.
The taxpayer. I got it.
What's happening here today? One forty-five?
I got it. Okay, so I'm moving on. But anyway, I would like, before we get to the budget, I'd like to get three nods up here that we need to seriously look at what it takes to address these stormwater issues. I got one, got two. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I would say one thing that was actually highlighted this evening was that there are properties in the city and properties that have no requirement for onsite water retention. And so, a lot of this is a private property matter too because a lot of them are dumping into public streets because the work was done before code existed to require. So, there's some of that that's going on too.
And sometime.
I didn't want to dwell.
Well, some, no, but sometime it's maintenance education too. Because we keep approving all these underground exfiltrations and stuff and the question, well, until they get.
But Carolyn, I'm not, I really want the stormwater thing to be worked on, but I'm not willing to attribute it to what we're building and, and that because that's not necessarily true.
That's just a piece of the pie. It's just, and I appreciate that. So, the second thing was, most of you know that I'm on the tri-county board for the Florida League and our emphasis right now is to increase participation. And I know that, that, I know you might not be that aware of it, but they, we have, we meet monthly. We have a luncheon with an educational program. I know it's hard for people who have to be in an office then, but those of you that don't, I would, I'm thrilled. Sarah has started to come. In fact, you're on the taxation committee for legislative issues this year. That's awesome. And, and you do learn a lot, which is wonderful. But we have finance, taxation, we have land use, we have municipal administration. I'm on the transportation board this year and we have utilities and natural resources, which sounded like something our new commissioner might be very interested in. But I just, I want to say, please come. Please come.
You're wondering what you wanted to do.
With your free time. But anyway, so we have the annual conference this year is on August the fifteenth and it's right here in Orlando. So, you don't have to stay in a hotel someplace in South Florida. So, if you're interested in participating, I just wanted to make, yeah, let people understand that many cities have multiple commissioners that go. It's not like, oh, I know I'm dealt, you know, I, I know I'm the assigned person, but many cities have multiple commissioners that go. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell you that and you're welcome and I'd be happy to give you any information.
Would that, would that need to be a noticed meeting?
No, because you don't, we're not talking about city things. We're talking about state things mostly.
They don't put two commissioners on the same committee?
Right, they don't.
Thanks, Ms. Sarah.
Right. And then the last thing for me was the Park Avenue signage issue. And, and that is a big deal. I know we had a resident come up, but I've also had been contacted by two property managers, I mean, two property owners on Park Avenue saying, "Oh, my God, when did we start doing that? We've never done that." So, while the code may have allowed it, no one understood the code allowed it. In fact, they thought it did not. So, I'm glad you're looking at that. And I'm sure you ought to be able to get, I hope George too, yes, George and Bronz. I know it's not Orange Avenue, but it's Park Avenue. And, and our design guidelines for Park Avenue have not been looked at in a long time. So, I'm glad we're addressing that. And, and Randy, would it be possible for you to tell us when somebody would come back with something at the next meeting? I know not today. I'm not asking today. It's not fair, but maybe by the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. So, Commissioner Cooper, I was hoping you would mention Trevilian and Gay Road and, and that litany of places that need stormwater looked at, but.
Yeah, we've been on there.
Yeah. So, I also attended the Heritage Center event, but I came late. I was laying tile. And, but anyway, upstairs, they have a new exhibit. They're all the sage folks from the west side that are still alive and some really interesting stories if you get a chance. So, one of the reasons I haven't been to any of the League of Cities meetings is because I go to all the city board meetings or pretty much all of them. And especially the Lakes Board meeting, I generally don't miss those. But I'm concerned about something that I heard at the last meeting. And Troy, you're on the hook here and Randy probably chime in on this, but my concern is that we no longer have an experienced full-time Lakes manager. And you had mentioned that Megan, who was previously an intern, was taking a leadership role. And with the multitude of FDEP standards and, oh, the permits and licenses and all that that one has to keep up with, I'm just not that comfortable not having that position filled right now.
I forgot something.
So, okay, so let me address this. This is a, we obviously only Randy and, and the city attorney report into this, into this board. So, if there are, I would, I'm not as familiar with that as you are, Mr. Weaver. But I think if you take that up with, with the city manager and have him address that, that'd probably be the appropriate place to handle that. And I think we, we want the best people that, i- if that's an issue, then certainly bring it up. I'm glad you raised it, so we're aware of it. But if you could take it up with him separately, that'd be good. Thank you. Ms. Cooper?
Just succession planning and gapping. We're gapping a lot of slots, pretty, I don't know what our succession planning is. I, I would feel comfortable some point in time maybe talking about that. And leaving these slots open so long, I, I guess that's real good for the budget. I just, it seem, and I know, it just seems like you ought to have backups already, ready to do a lot of the stuff. And I know that might be the manpower and what does it take to manage this city the way you would like to? So, I really, that was a serious question that I asked you because we have not raised the billage rate in a very, very long time. And so, it's a serious question that says, you know, what does it take to do what we want to be doing? Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm very pleased with how much we do for, with our staff. So, I appreciate that there, we could always do more and do, and do better. But I will tell you, we have more compliments. What did we just see today? We're the coolest suburbs in the U.S. That was pretty interesting to see from the arts and culture ladies that, that came and presented to us. I was at a Juneteenth celebration as well. It was a different one that I was at that was, um, here in Winter Park. And there was a speech by, and I always forget the gentleman's name, who used to be at Rollins, now he's at Michigan State, Julian Cham?
Chambers.
Chambers. Thank you. So, that was, that was a nice, nice event at the community center. And also, I was, had the opportunity to go to the airport today. It was the driving of the ceremonial red spike for the connection of the eventual Virgin train from Miami to Orlando. So, I mean, we had Congressman Micah, Congressman Demings, Congressman Soto, Orange County Mayor Demings, Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer, the head, the, and the interesting thing was a gentleman who's behind this entire thing was with Fortress Investments in New York, a gigantic investment group. And I said hi to him. I said, "I'm Steve LeRue, I'm mayor of the City of Winter Park." And he said, "You guys have a great city." So, I had no, I've never met this gentleman before, but he travels. He said during a speech, "Over two-hundred days a year." And he said, he said, "I love coming to Winter Park when I'm in town." So, you know, so it's all good stuff. But anyway, very cool. They're going to be opening hopefully in twenty twenty-two and we will have high-speed rail that goes north of a hundred-and-twenty miles an hour connecting Miami eventually to Orlando, through to Tampa, through to Disney, too. So, very cool stuff that's coming this hour away. All right, folks, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.